All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for the Select Board Meeting of September 29th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag, right, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So we just want to let you know that this meeting is being recorded on local cable television, broadcast live and available upon demand after the meeting is over. It is a Zoom meeting, so if we do have people that are logging in from home and they have questions, please put your question, your name and address into the Q and A, and Sean will let us know that there's a question there. And, um, let me see, uh, let's do introductions to ensure that we have a quorum, starting with you, Jamie.
Jamie Stebbins.
I'm Jennifer Stacy.
Dottie Fulgenetti.
Craig Barger.
And we have our Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan, and Senior Executive Assistant Elizabeth Hegg, and Mark, uh, Select Board Member Mark Lamb is not able to be here to meet. So with that, we're going to jump right into six o'clock PM. We have a public hearing that's timed, and Craig, could you please read the, um, the notice?
Street acceptance, the Easton Select Board will hold a public meeting on September 29th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Colleen Corona Boardroom, Town Hall, 150, 136 Elm Street, Northeastern Mass, for the purpose of recommending acceptance of the following Sherwood Drive, Station Zero plus five zero plus two, Station Three plus sixty-eight point four. Any person who's interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed street acceptance should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. The plan can be viewed at the Planning Department Office in Town Hall.
Great, yes, Craig. So our Planning Director Ken Kirkland is here. Ken, if you want to come up and just tell us a little bit about this.
Uh, so from the record, Ken Kirkland, Planning Director, 136 here at Elm Street. I believe you guys have in your packet the, uh, report from Director Danison before. This is here before my tenure. This was reviewed through with the Department of Public Works, and they concur that it was, uh, built and constructed appropriately. There's some, uh, remaining, there was some work that was done, just to kind of break it up a little bit to relative today. It was an older subdivision room. The report lays out pretty much those findings, and I would concur with that without anything extra to add. And I believe the Planning Facility Board made a positive recommendation, I believe it was at the July meeting.
Yes. Yep, July 28th.
Okay. So, uh, just for people at home, when we accept a right of way, uh, when a subdivision is built and a road is, uh, not fully constructed yet, there's the, the developer has a bond, and that's held until the DPW can establish that the road is built according to spec, and then we vote to take that road, um, as a, as a public way rather than a private way. Does any of the board members have any questions on this one in particular?
No.
No? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the plan of the town hall. Which is to approve the acceptance of Sherwood Drive as presented by the Planning Director.
Second.
So that's Barger and Stacy, uh, all in favor? unanimous. Okay. Thank you so much. Do we want to skip over the?
So I would, um, move on to items five, six, and seven under announcements, proclamations. Then you could probably get through your licenses as well before the swearing in.
Okay, great. So announcement number, uh, five, the Massachusetts Excellence in Technology Award. Easton received that from Municipal Cyber, Cyber Security Citation. Connor, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, thanks, Dottie. I'm pleased to advise the board that the Town of Easton and specifically Information Systems Manager Mike Deltano were presented with a Municipal Cyber Security Award on September 18th. The award was a governor citation given out at the Massachusetts Digital Government Summit, uh, presented to recognize Easton's ongoing efforts significantly improving our municipal cybersecurity posture, including performing security assessments, improvement roadmaps, implementing best practices like multi-factor authentication, uh, cloud redundancies, cyber training, response plans, and, uh, 24/7 monitoring of our network. So, uh, Mike has worked really hard, uh, uh, with us as a leadership team to get us where we need to be, uh, to kind of harden our, uh, uh, technology and cyber infrastructure. That's obviously a huge liability, business risk, legal risk for, uh, the community and the organization, and we're really proud of his work and, uh, happy to see that recognized on the state level, so.
Any comments or questions?
Congratulations to Michael.
Yeah, that's a, that's really big, and I'm very excited for Michael. He's doing a great job for us and has been with us for a long time, so it's really great that he got that recognition for the town. All right, um, number, um, six is recognition of National Manufacturing Day, October 3rd, 2025. Craig has a proclamation for that.
Manufacturing Day proclamation. Whereas the manufacturing sector plays a vital role in the economic strength, innovation, and resilience of the Town of Easton, contributing to the prosperity and well-being of our community. Whereas Manufacturing Day provides a unique opportunity to recognize and celebrate the important contributions made by our local manufacturers whose dedication to excellence, quality, and ingenuity drives the success of Easton's industries. And whereas Manufacturing Day serves to inspire the next generation of skilled workers, engineers, and innovators by showcasing the diverse opportunities available in the manufacturing sector and by promoting the pursuit of careers that will shape the future of our community and our nation. And whereas Easton is home to a variety of manufacturers whose products reach markets near and far, further underscoring the importance of this industry to both the, our local economy and the global marketplace. And whereas by supporting Manufacturing Day, we encourage continued investment in our local workforce, educational partnerships, and technological advancements that will ensure the sustained growth and competitiveness of the manufacturing industry in Easton and beyond. Therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Easton, do hereby proclaim October 3rd, 2025, as Manufacturing Day in Easton, Massachusetts, and call upon all residents to recognize the essential role that manufacturing plays in our town, to engage with local manufacturers, and to support the continued development of this dynamic and essential industry. In witness whereof, whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Easton to be affixed this 29th day of September, 2025. Dottie, Dottie Fulgenetti Chair, Craig Barger Vice Chair, Mark Lamb, Jamie Stebbins, and Jennifer Stacy Members.
Thanks, Craig. Any comments or questions?
Just being in manufacturing myself, I appreciate the recognition, uh, and just the import of manufacturing and the fact that, uh, while we employ a lot of people, we continue to, uh, you know, improve communities through, um, good-paying jobs and, uh, and supporting infrastructure projects and other capital investments, so.
Great.
Couldn't say it any better.
So I just want to mention that in the Town Crier, our weekly newsletter, there is a notice in there that Northeastern Machine at 218 Elm Street, which is across the street from here, will be hosting their annual open house tours for Manufacturing Day on Friday, October 3rd between 1:00 and 3:00 PM. Please join them for a guided tour, their production floor, and quality lab, and learn about modern manufacturing. Um, Northeastern Machine has been a part of the community for 60-plus years. They manufacture and supply metal and plastic machines components used by the robotics, medical device, and other high-tech industries. The event is free, reservations are encouraged, and that information with the, um, contact information is in the Town Crier. If you haven't been there, it's really a very, very interesting place to go. And they do really cool things there, so I would strongly encourage that. The next item that we have is Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October 25th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the police station on Lothrup Street. Chief Boone has confirmed that they will be doing Drug Takeback Day. The Police Department plans to send out notifications later this month, including posts to social media. So it's a really great time to get rid of your unused medications. Just drive in, there'll be a person there to take them from you, drop them off easily. So, um, definitely, it's, it's one of the first things that people can do to get, um, prescription medication out of their homes and not into the environment. So, um, thank you for, the chief for doing that. Let me see what time it is, 6:11, uh, we can do another one. Road closure request for the Easton Lions Club Holiday Festival and Parade, which is December 6th and 7th, 2025 this year.
Leave John and Lori on their way in.
Yep.
Yes.
Hey Lori, come on in. You can come up to the microphone.
Uh, Dottie, that mic's not working, the table, please.
At the table.
Right to the table.
To the table.
Have a seat or stand or re-. Hello, good to be seen, good to see you.
It's that time again.
It is that time.
Not the first time, and certainly not the last.
Tell us a little bit about, for people that might not know, if there's someone in the community that doesn't know about the holiday.
There always is. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to come to the board, our Select Board this evening, and our town talk about the 40th Annual Easton Lions Holiday Festival. Hard to believe that it's been 40 years. And, and contrary to personal appearance, no, I've not been here for all 40 of them, but, but a lot of them. And if there, if, if people don't know, the motto of Lions Club International is "We Serve", and we append that here in Easton by adding "We Build Community", and the Holiday Festival's a great outreach for one of the many ways we work to build community. So this year's event is going to be an extension of what we've done in prior years. Andrew Parker, who has kindly stepped up to take lead of the, uh, program and, and guidance, has expanded it to include more and more events for young families especially, but also more inclusive of different organizations and groups within the Town of Easton. So our request to our board is to grant us street closures, alcohol permit. Coordination, of course, will be with our security officer, with the required permittees, uh, permit issuers here in Town Hall, as well as our own security people who oversee the operation, communicate and coordinate with DPW and the Eastern Police Department. And it is for Saturday and Sunday, December 6th and 7th, where things will be kicking off around 11:00 AM and run as late as 10:00 PM before we clean things up, put things away. And the event will take place predominantly around the Rockery. The parade on Sunday will start at NRT yet again, and come down Main Street, and we'll, we'll work with our Police Department to have a rolling street closure of the streets along Main as the parade works its way to the Rockery location. And then there are events scheduled throughout the day on Saturday and Sunday, taking place at the Puget House, at the Italian Gardens, at Oak City Memorial Hall, at our library, and different areas around the village in, uh, Northeaston.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
So this is, uh, something that we've done every year, so everyone knows, uh, where the, um, the road stops will be there, and we have that in our packet. The request has been circulated to Police, Fire, and DPW and Inspeccional Services. Chief Alexander and Director Field report that they don't have any concerns. The Lions have been advised that Chief Boone needs them to reach out to arrange detail officers, and that Inspector Greiner requires they obtain permits for the large tents and/or temporary wiring.
Correct.
Food services, all the, all the things that go with that, so.
And we'll administer those accordingly.
Awesome. And, uh, we do have the liquor licenses that we'll vote on separately outside of this one.
Do you need our input on those, or any questions on those, or should we remain for those?
Uh, no, you don't have to, we, we're fine with that.
Wonderful.
So this is a free event to the public. Look for everything, look for this on social media, and look for, uh, there should be instructions or, um, ways to let people know where to park around there, um, so, because they won't be parking in the very downtown. So, um, people should take that into consideration when making a move.
Correct. And we'll be sharing information as well at eastonlions.org, our, our local website, and we'll have QR codes, uh, and part of the request is for banner placement at strategic locations around town. We'll have that information available there, as well as QR codes to provide additional insight.
Is there any ticketed event Saturday night at the Hall?
There will not be.
Okay.
As far as I know now.
Okay, great. All right. Any comments, questions?
I'm excited. Uh, that's so, been in town, so, like, 16 years, and you probably had to each, or that.
Excellent.
I think, yeah, so, thank you for all the hard work, and especially this tricentennial year, the entire Lions Club. Our organization's been doing an amazing job, did an amazing, uh, car show across the street from our house.
Was, oh, perfect.
It was, yes, uh, just a weekend or two ago, so it's, but the whole tricentennial year, it's amazing. And my folks have stepped up and do so many long hours, and that's what people don't realize. It's eight hours, weeks in advance of these big events that people put in their head a lot of the time. So, thank you very much to all of you.
Glad to do it. Thank you.
That's such an important event for the community, and you can see it at the attendance. I mean, it was amazing to watch, to see how many people were there throughout the weekend. So thank you for all the hard work, you and the rest of the Lions who made this happen, and all the volunteers beyond the Lions, but it's truly a massive undertaking.
Thank you, Jennifer. Exciting that it's, it's at the end of the 300th anniversary, which is, which is pretty special.
Yep.
And I've been here more than the 40 years, so.
Oh, goodness.
I haven't been involved, but I've been here.
We've seen you around.
Well, I'd be remiss if I did not say that I'm a member of the Lions Club, and I'm going to channel my, uh, Avery Lee Williams and say, has anybody checked out the Lions Club lately? So if any, if anybody would like to become a member, reach out to John and Lori. They will personally invite you to one of the meetings where you'll get to meet, uh, a lot of the community volunteers and sign up as a member. It's the greatest thing to belong to because you can do one event, or you can do all the event, the events, and nobody puts pressure on you.
And with 163 members, you're bound to know somebody else's line.
Exactly. All right. So with that, we will, uh, take a vote.
So we, we move to motion to, to road closure request from the annual Easton Lions Club Holiday Festival and Parade, December 6th and 7th, 2025.
Second.
So that's Barger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much, thanks.
He's going to get that one.
Okay. So next on the agenda is the Fire Department swearing-in ceremony. We're waiting for the chief to bring in the, um, the candidates. Not the right word. Hello, come on in.
Chief, shall I stall for a moment? They're all coming in. We kept them outside to, uh, cool quiet for you, so they're all, they're all coming in now.
Okay. Well, welcome to you, and welcome to our state rep, Lisa Field and Bridget Plouffe. Oh, I see a lot of families coming through.
Coming down the line.
If you move him over a little, he'll be able to see himself on there.
I see you, Daddy.
All right, so.
I'm both there.
Chief, you want to?
Ready?
Yes, we are. You want to just give a preamble for us all? Thanks. So, thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you, and Chair and Board for having us. This is, uh, one of the great occasions we get to do where we swear in officers in our department. We do it for our new hires as well. But becoming an officer is a, a big deal in the fire service. It's where you make that leap from, um, doing and, and doing that, that hard, heroic work to still doing that, but being in charge of making sure everybody else is doing it well, and going home safe every morning. And that's the leap. And first, we're going to have our two lieutenants be sworn in independently. In our system, the lieutenants are the first step up from our firefighters. And then after that, we'll have two captains, and those are the two captains are, they, they run a ship, so they're in charge, the captains, the lieutenants are under them. And then the firefighters, the privates, are up below them in the rank structure. So we're very excited tonight, uh, to have, uh, two, um, uh, lieutenants and two captains. These are all as a result of, um, retirements and departures from the department. So they're not necessarily new positions, for anybody who's curious, with anything going on, but they are filling in, um, for those retirements and departures, so. That, is there questions?
No.
All right, so, what's coming in is our Assistant Town Clerk is here tonight to help us, and we appreciate that. And our first, um, candidate tonight is, uh, Tony Ionitis, and he's going to be sworn in. And he has a twin, Victoria, and some Casey will be helping pin him. Can you give me that? Okay, beautiful. The floor is yours.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Tony Ionitis.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As Lieutenant with the Easton Fire Department.
As Lieutenant with the Easton Fire Department.
And to do so in accordance.
And to do so in accordance.
With the bylaws of the Town of Easton.
With the bylaws of the Town of Easton.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to stand with your family for a second to get, like, a nice picture from Sean?
Chief, can you pull that mic out of the way?
Sure.
We've done this before.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. So our next lieutenant is Kevin Mulcady. So Kevin is, um, getting the order as lieutenant, he's on group four. There you go. He'll walk away with us and break it, so. All right. Um, he's our group four lieutenant, and, uh, so, um, his wife Kristen Hope Pinningham with his children. And the floor is yours.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Monica.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As Lieutenant with the Easton Fire Department.
As Lieutenant with the Easton Fire Department.
And to do so in accordance.
And to do so in accordance.
With the bylaws of the Town of Easton.
With the bylaws of the Town of Easton.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God. Congratulations.
You're perfectly tall enough that you hide me in the mirror there, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Captain Shado coming. So I, Tiana, and this is Dottie Real. So we have, uh, Captain Shado is, uh, our group three captain now, and, uh.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Monica Shado.
Will do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As Captain with Easton Fire Department.
As Captain with the Easton Fire Department.
And to do so in accordance.
And to do so in accordance.
With the bylaws of the Town of Easton.
The bylaws of the Town, bylaws of the Town of Easton.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, and next is Captain Jason Dealey. He'll be accompanied by his uncle, which is Paul, who will, uh, boss the MSZ. Uh, Captain Dealey is our group four captain.
I do it. I want my candy.
Hi, state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As Captain with the Easton Fire Department.
As Captain with the Easton Fire Department.
And to do so in accordance.
And to do so in accordance.
With the bylaws of the Town of Easton.
The bylaws of the Town of Easton.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melissa.
A round of applause. So next, we're very fortunate to have a representative from, uh, P. D. Hill here tonight to, uh, represent some citations for both the House and the Senate. So you want to come on up?
Absolutely.
So we have them all here.
I can, I can talk with them up.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that that?
For the more.
It's really broadcast to, you can't have to.
Okay.
But as long as you guys are all aware, so.
Okay. So, congratulations. We have some citations from, uh, both the last, Representative Field and Representative Plus, and also we have some Senate citations from Senator Driscoll, who unfortunately was unable to be here, but he did send along his regards and citations. So, be it hereby known to all, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to each one of you, you don't have to vote for both, for brevity, in recognition of your promotion to Lieutenant or Captain, and your dedicated service to the residents of Easton. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. It's given this 29th day of September, 2025, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, myself, Bridget Plouffe, and Representative Lisa Field.
And on behalf of Senator Driscoll, we have, uh, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate, an official citation to all of you, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations in recognition of being sworn in, um, to whichever the rank of the captain, and its best wishes for continued success. This citation be both duly signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, as well as, um, Senator Driscoll, and it also will be presented to the Clerk of the Senate. And again, it's signed today, so congratulations.
Mulcady, excellent. Shado, Dealey. Congratulations. Antonio.
Good job.
And Kevin.
John Carroll's going to leave that, so I'll introduce him.
Congratulations.
No, and a big, thank you so much. Big thank you, Representative Plowton Field, for coming out tonight, coming to Town Hall to be here for this.
We also, uh, we have one, one other, um, person who would like to talk, Deputy Chief John Carroll.
Please, as a board, I also have a citation for this expert.
Great.
Chief Alexander. And I asked you what that was for, and I knew what I forgot. Please step forward. Full disclosure, I wouldn't be holding this citation if it wasn't for, uh, Captain Shado. They helped out the majesty putting this together, so I thank them. And I get the honor to present the 20 Year Service Award to both a mentor of mine and friend, Chief Alexander. So if you allow me a moment, I'm just going to read this citation.
So if you allow me a moment, I'm just going to read this citation. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Fire Service Commission presents the Massachusetts Firefighter Service Award to Chief Justin Alexander of the Eastern Fire Department. In grateful appreciation and recognition of your 20 years of dedicated fire service as a career firefighter on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Congratulations.
And we have a couple more citations.
Oh, we have that, do we? I didn't want to run with crap.
I don't mind talking, but no one's above me.
So we also have a citation from the Town Hall of Massachusetts House of Representatives. Again, same language, but to Chief Justin Alexander in recognition of your 20 dedicated years of fire service. So congratulations. Okay. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both so much.
Yes, we're going to take a couple of minute recess, so ECAT, you can pause us for a minute and we're going to take a couple of pictures and then let the room clear and.
I think it's still light enough outside. If we, am I right or wrong?
Yes, and the ladder trucks out there.
Okay, so if you want, we could get a group photo with.
Great.
All right, so we're going to skip ahead to common victual license transfer at El Monahri. Eastern Group Incorporated doing business as Crispy Crust Pizzeria to Vine and Table Kitchen LLC, doing business as Crispy Crust Pizza, 690 Depot Street. So we do have an application to transfer the common victual license and the application's been reviewed by town departments. And the owner Nicholas Arone, is that how you say it?
Aroney.
Aroney is present to ask, to answer any questions that we have. So do you want to just tell us it's just a change in management essentially?
Yeah, so just purchasing the business, going to be keeping the name for the time being and elevating the food hopefully. That's always the plan, so.
Well, people love Crispy Crust Pizza, so you've got a great, a great base there.
That's what I've heard. The current owners, they're super nice. Honestly, like just a blessing to work with and turning over the business. So far, so good. I'm really excited to be able to operate.
Everybody says that and when we've been in there, they've been super nice as well. Any comments or questions from the board?
It's not far from where I live, so I'm glad we've got continuation and looking forward to what we bring.
Awesome. Absolutely, it's my pleasure.
Man, best of luck with this new better.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
All right, Craig, can I get a motion?
Sure, I move to approve the common victual license transfer, Elamani Eastern Group Incorporated doing business as Crispy Crust Pizzeria to Vine and Table Kitchen LLC. Doing business as Crispy Crust Pizza, Pizzeria, 690 Depot Street.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, congratulations and thank you for choosing Easton.
Thank you.
All right, we have a number of one day liquor licenses that are going to be pretty quick. I don't think there's anyone here for them between the Shovel Town Brewery. So we're just going to run through these and we can do these on the slate?
You can, yes.
Do you have the motion for that, Greg?
I do.
Okay, so the first one is Oktoberfest, the Shovel Town Brewery, 50 Oliver Street, October 4th, 2025, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with a rain date of October 5th. The second one is the NRT Annual Harvest Fair, Shovel Town Brewery at the Sheep Pasture, 307 Main Street, October 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The next is the Old Colony YMCA Donor Event at the Shovel Town Brewery, 50 Oliver Street, October 7th, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The 30 Wheat Club Reception, also the Shovel Town Brewery at the Parish Center Immaculate Conception Church, 193 Main Street, November 8th, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The Eastern, bless you, the Eastern Lions Club Holiday Festival at the, with the Shovel Town Brewery, 3 Barrows Street and the Rockery, December 6th, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The Eastern Lions Club Festival at the Shovel Town Brewery, 3 Barrows Street at the Rockery, December 7th, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then a private event at the Shovel Town Brewery, 50 Oliver Street, December 27th, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. So I'm just looking through to see, none of those require a police detail.
Some, some of them do. They're noted in the packet. And when that's the case, it's communicated directly to the applicant through the permit system as well, so they're already aware of that.
For, for the harvest fair and the Lions Club Festival. Okay?
All right, I move to approve seven one day beer and wine licenses as requested as a slate. The approval is contingent on securing police details at the NRT event and both days of the Lions Club Festival as recommended by Chief, Police Chief Boone.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right, we are going to skip back to, I've got a lot of paper here, so I appreciate your patience as well. So 6:45, we are looking at the Stormwater Utility Steering Committee. Connor, do you want to just give us a little introduction to this?
Sure, thanks, Dottie. So as the board will recall, at a recent meeting of yours, Director Field gave a presentation regarding the maintenance of stormwater assets in Easton. The unfunded mandates we have to comply with and some of the challenges we have with funding that. We recommended the creation of a steering committee to look at feasibility for potentially establishing a enterprise fund based utility, much like we have for water or sewer. For maintenance of stormwater and the board adopted a charge for that. We advertised. It's great to see, I think we have five candidates who applied for the three seats. So as the board's practice, they've been invited in to do a brief introduction or interview with the board. And so the charges in the packet, I believe as part of advertising it, the charge was made available online, so anyone who applied has seen it. There's a dedicated webpage for that committee, so I think the goals of the charging committee have been out there. And we have, I believe, all candidates here, either physically or in person. And so the first candidate going by last name is Joseph Dorfler. Ready?
Okay.
Sure.
Sure, come on up. And so just to add to what Connor said, the composition is going to be three at large citizens of Easton to be appointed by the select board. So we'll be, we'll be looking at three. So tonight, because we have five candidates, we're, we ask you to keep it like brief under two minutes. And what we're going to ask you, every candidate, is just to introduce yourself, your name, you know, where you live and why you want to be on this committee and just any relevant expertise or, you know, what you bring to the table, in other words.
Sure, yeah. So my name is Joe Dorfler. I live on 51 Meeting House Lane, been here for a few years now. Yeah, we have two little kids and really like it in Easton, have a family who's been here for a while. And I'm an attorney, so I work in the energy space, energy, water, regulated utilities. So have a lot of familiarity when it comes to utility work, a lot of familiarity when it comes to water regulations. We represent, we're special counsel for a couple municipalities. So have relevant experience as far as that's concerned. And when I saw the charge, I was pretty interested and excited, honestly, that Easton was interested in doing something like this. I think that, you know, it could be great for a town. I think it's definitely something that needs to be explored though, at the end of the day and, you know, taken to vote. So pretty open minded one way or the other to see how the data and how the infrastructure really plays out, because I think that can really mean a lot is, you know, what infrastructure is needed, what kind of funding is needed for the long term. What is going to be feasible for the long term, because you don't want to set something up that's going to fail or not needed at the lo, at the end of the day. So yeah, really interested to get down into it, see what kind of requirements are needed, looking at the financial statements. Little bit experience working with, you know, with these kind of funds before, so it'd be great to do that, you know, where I live. So that's why I went up for it.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next, we have Jeffrey Hansen.
That clip is up there. Good evening, thank you very much for inviting me. My name is Jeff Hanson, I've lived in Easton for going on 46 years, we built our house up here, we've been longtime residents, and as disclosure, my wife was on the finance committee for several years, I think some of you people work with her, so we're familiar with the town government and, and the way it works, we go to most town meetings, I can't say we made every one of them, but we make most town meetings. I am a registered mechanical engineer in the state of Massachusetts, among others, and my background is in construction of utility plants, primarily electric, but I also designed and developed the Aquaria Water Plant, which you may have heard of. And that, obviously, that is withdrawing water from the river, and a lot of permitting requirements, which I got very familiar with DEP and EPA on the regulations controlling stormwater runoff from both the construction of the plant and the 16 miles of pipe that come up here to Easton. I also did a lot of pipeline work involving stormwater control in the steam and condensate supply to Mass General Hospital in, in Boston. I worked as their consultant on their steam system for 30 years. I also did power plants in the Midwest with stormwater issues as well, we developed 3,000-acre cooling pond in one area, which had a lot, a lot of stormwater issues. So I, I serve also on a review board, we call it a review board up in Vermont, we have a house in Vermont, and in Vermont, there really isn't as much regulation down as we have down here, there's not much regulation at all. So our association, which consists of 1,400 members, it's, it's a small town, basically, we're responsible for, one of the things we're responsible for is the stormwater management from new construction, so I'm very familiar with the issues that you need to look at. I've always thought that stormwater control is, is not really given the attention that it needs, and my, we live in, in, in Eastern Village, and, and we've had some recent problems with stormwater runoff that we had not had before, so I've become very familiar with the, the Eastern stormwater control system, and what it does and doesn't do. So based on that familiarity, and I've actually met with the director and told him of my concerns, and some of them we worked out, took care of, but I think I could help out quite a bit, because I did the rate setting on the Aquaria Water Plant, I was involved with rate setting on that, and how we would fund and finance that whole operation, that ended up being a 70, $70 million project, and we've got the financing for that, and figured out the rates for that. In, in Mass General, I developed that system there, which involved quite a bit, and helped set the rates on that contract, that's, that's a 20-year contract that is about to run out as well, so I think I could offer a lot to the group with experience, construction experience, and, and what can happen, the do's and don'ts of construction, and what the fallout is.
Great, thank you so much.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lucas Murphy. Lucas, yeah?
Lucas is not here, we have Jim Hamilton, remote, waiting to be put on Zoom.
Oh, okay, we'll skip over to him, he was first. Jim, you here?
He's way up there, so.
We sent him an invite.
He did say that he was in the car, so he might. Yeah? Oh, there we go, I declined, so he might not be able to talk.
All right, we'll try him again, and Lucas is not here either, or on Zoom? Okay. All right, Dan Pasucci? Thanks for being here, come on up.
I've run a TV show in Easton for a number of years, and be on that elsewhere, so. I'm Dan Pasucci, I live at 34 Shen Marie Way, I've been in Easton for 13 years plus, I'm counting, so far. I live in Golden Oaks, which is a private community, and I have, you know, I'm a trustee on the board there of the Homeowners Association, at one time I was president of the Homeowners Association. I had been in the construction business for 48 years, and while I was not a consultant in steam tunnels, I was boots on the ground in the steam tunnels, and maintained all that stuff, and put it in, and installed it, and did all the maintenance on it, and did all the, you know, had to walk in there with the broomstick. So I'm familiar with mechanical and engineering, I run, I actually maintain the stormwater systems in our development, because the town does not touch them, and I'm here because I'm against having this, I'll be honest with you, I'm against having another town entity, I'm another, another form, another extension of government, another tax increase or fee, and I figure on the committee, at least I can have a voice for those who feel the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
I'll try Jim one more time. Yeah, except for this one.
Okay.
Once he turns his camera on, he'll appear on the screen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hey, Jim.
Hi, everybody, sorry about that, I couldn't get off mute earlier.
No problem. So we just asked people to introduce themselves, tell us why you are interested in serving on this committee, and a little bit about what experience that you bring to the table.
Sure, thank you, everyone, so my name is Jim Hamilton, the 14 Morse Road, I am a recently elected member of the school committee, I was formerly on the PACE committee, and I'm very interested, I think this is a reasonable way to manage and sustain infrastructure investment over the long term for our community. I understand the revenue pressures we are under, I do think a lot of this has to do with smaller details, is this a good idea for our community? I think so, I think ultimately it comes down to, how is it, how is it financed, who approves the rates and increases the rates, and making sure that should this pass as utility, like how does the town keep track of those improvements, sure that those improvements are being done for the benefit of the taxpayers and the citizens, really for the next 30 to 50-plus years, this infrastructure is a long-term investment, something which I'm keen to see is hopefully a long-term resident of Easton.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, and Lucas Murphy, who also applied, I'm just gonna give a little bit of information from his application, so he's a site work contractor with a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering, he's on the capital planning committee now, and works in the utilities field. So, you know, we say this, and we mean it sincerely, when we get more candidates for the amount of positions that we have, it's always a very tough choice, and we do our best with that, but we also want to remind people that these meetings are all open to the public, and if they are Zoom meetings, they're televised, I'm not sure if this group will be or not, but certainly the meetings will be posted, and if somebody doesn't get selected for this committee, we would invite them to please join, or follow along, or still send us comments, and that goes for the public as well, if people are interested in this. It's very important, it's something that a lot of communities are looking towards doing, because the, the infrastructure, by the time it's completely failed, it's too late, and, and then it's a real problem, so we have to really keep up with this, this funding is not coming in for it, like things used to happen in the past with the state, and so we have to think of creative solutions to be able to maintain our stormwater system. We have three people to nominate, so I don't know, do you want to nominate people one at a time, or do you want to nominate a slate of three people, or how would you more prefer to do that?
I'm getting to go one, one at a time, or I think if we do a slate, one each of us to give three candidates, and then we'll see if we match them in the last round.
If, if each of you say three names, we'll take a straw poll and let you know.
All right, let's do that, so we did last time, I'll start.
All right, give them a second to write down the names, so we can keep track of them.
Just while he's writing those down, I, I just want to reemphasize what you said, which is so thankful that folks have come out, and that it's contested, we have this many people coming out for these positions, and great to see the backgrounds and passions of the folks that are here, because this is important. You know, we've talked at length with Director Field about, you know, the issues that, you know, we had a Bay Road issue, where we had, you know, our road actually caved in a sinkhole open up when one of our storm drains failed, and fortunately it was a DPW vehicle that was there, and they were able to respond almost instantaneously, and stop a vehicle from coming behind them, and have a steering sensitive, so I appreciate when you've got, you know, a group that's gonna be looking at all this, and saying, how do we manage this, right, moving forward, so again, like an unfunded mandate, so.
We're good for your straw poll.
Jamie, you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll start. I'll say that again, thanks to everybody for coming out, Mr. Hanson, Jeffrey Hanson, James Hamilton, and Joseph Dorfler.
Jen?
And I also have Dorfler, Hamilton, and Hanson.
Craig?
I have Hanson, Hamilton, and Dorfler.
And I also have Hanson, Hamilton, and Dorfler. Great, so there we have it.
You have a unanimous slate, if you would like, you could do a motion and a second to appoint the slate, and then you would do a roll call, sorry, I just tried to catch a fly and I failed, a roll call of each of your last names in the slate.
Do you want to make the motion?
So I move to appoint to the Stormwater Utility Steering Committee the aforementioned names of Hamilton, Dorfler, and Hanson.
As the slate?
As, as, as a slate.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, and it's a roll call vote?
Stevins' slate.
Stacy's slate.
Full Janetti's slate?
Bodger's slate.
Great, so thank you, you'll be hearing from the town clerk, they'll give you the information, you have to get sworn in before you go to the meetings, and we thank everybody for applying, and truly, if you weren't appointed, please consider going to the meetings and still giving your feedback, so we appreciate that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. So now we are at item 11.
I believe, actually, you have one more appointment, but you had us time for 6:55, that I think we do have somebody here for.
CPA.
Oh, sorry, this is a long agenda, it's hard to keep track of all of these, so.
Yeah, sorry.
We, I wanted to see where I have this. Oh, Community Preservation Commission.
CPA for Rob Rogers.
We have one appointment, Rob Rogers, for, for a term expiring June 30th, 2026, if you want to come up to the table, Rob, and. Hold on one second, so I just want to mention, the Community Preservation Committee's charge is responsible for soliciting and evaluating requests to make grants from Easton's Community Preservation Act funds to qualifying projects. Projects determined by the CPC to be worthy of funding are presented to town meeting for final approval, the CPC is also responsible for oversight of the CPA funds, and for meeting annual state reporting requirements relative to the CPA collections and expenditures. The Eastern Community Preservation Committee is made up of nine members, and includes representatives from the Conservation Commission, Historical, Housing Authority, Planning and Zoning Board, Recreation, and four citizen representatives, so we're glad that you are interested, and even though it's uncontested, we like people to, you know, come and introduce themselves, so the community can see them, and we can, we know you, but meet you again in this capacity, so if you just want to introduce yourself, and tell us why you're interested in this?
Absolutely, yes, so my name's Rob Rogers, I reside at 7 Amber Lane, I've been in town for about 17 years, have really fallen in love with the, the town of Easton, raised my two boys here, they're now off to college, and through the years, definitely taken advantage of many of the amenities that Easton has to offer, and also seen change over, over those years here in Easton, and, and with sort of growing recognition that there are, you know, threats to some of the things that make Easton great, and thankfully, we have the CPA here in Easton, as a, as a fund to preserve and protect, and provide, you know, additional resources for, for some of those important aspects of the town. So, you know, especially with increasing developments, threats to open space, preservation, the need for more recreational facilities, increasing cost of housing, so affordable housing really becoming an issue, and then historic preservation, so many beautiful historic places here in Easton. So in the past, I've, I've done research, I'm, I'm a college professor, I teach at Stonehill College, I've done research on land use planning, spent a lot of time researching New Jersey's Green Acres Program, which is, has some similar, similarities to Massachusetts' CPA, so when this opportunity arose, I felt like it would be a great opportunity to give back to the town, because the town's given me and my family such, such, you know, great experience over the last 17 years.
That's great, I think it's interesting that you mentioned, you know, the other places that are doing this, I would ask people at home, if you're watching this and you're thinking about it, to go on the Community Preservation Association from Massachusetts, just Google it, and look at the list of all the projects that we've done, because, you know, there's some that jump right out at us, like the Queesic Gardens, and, you know, work at Oaks Ames Hall, and the trustees of reservation site, the shovel works, different fields, but when you look at this all in a list of all the work that we've done, we were one of the first adopters of this policy, when there was 100% match, now the match is less, but it's still significant, think about what our town would look like without these things, and especially, we know, they would never get funded out of the operating budget, it would be impossible to come up with that money, so I personally really value the CPA, and the people that serve on it, that are willing to do the due diligence to make sure that the projects that come before us are good projects, and that are something that the community really sees, and, and will vote on at town meeting, so. Any questions, comments?
No, just thank you, man, thank you for volunteering, and for all that you do, you do a lot for this community as it is, and a lot of capacities and volunteer capacities, so thank you for stepping up.
My pleasure.
We made the experience, we're just a little bit happier, so thank you.
I'm very excited, Rob, that you decided to step up, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Craig, do you want to make a motion?
I move to appoint Robert Rogers, Community Preservation Committee, the term expires June 30th, 2026.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, and this is a roll call vote?
Stevins' Rogers.
Stacy Rogers.
Full Janetti Rogers?
Roger Rogers.
Great, so the town clerk will send you an email, and give you instructions on coming to get sworn in, and when the first meeting is.
Thanks very much.
All right, thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob, thanks for staying.
All right, next, we're gonna be looking at number 11, which is the Town Administrator's Employment Agreement, number eight, that's voluntary, that the contract is voluntarily reopened due to budget constraints at the request of the town administrator.
Sure, thanks, Dottie, as we prepare for additional budget cuts heading into fiscal 27, I've requested the board adopt an amendment, which will reduce my salary compared to the pay schedule that's in the previously approved agreement for the current year and for next year fiscal 27. I don't do so under any illusion that one position or changing anything of one position has any material impact on moving the needle on a $110 million organization, but nonetheless, I think it's appropriate in solidarity with our workforce and our departments, who are seeing their ranks shrink with successive waves of cuts, and I appreciate the board's continued support, so.
So I have a couple of comments on this, and then, and then the select board will each make comments, and I want to just underscore, the board did not ask for this, and not all the board members agreed with, with this, I want people to, to remember that Connor has exemplary performance in his history with us, and positions are turning over in all the surrounding towns, so I feel like we're very grateful to have you staying on board with us, because there's a lot of opportunity in other places, your goals, objectives, performance reviews, and contracts are all online, so if people want to look at those, I'd encourage them to look at all of them and compare those, to see what work a town administrator really does, and not just that, but all of the responsibilities, and so in addition to the salary reductions for 26 and 27, there were a couple of other quality of life changes. quality of life changes that we put terms that we updated as well as a one-year extension. So Jamie?
Yep, and I'll just say that, again, thanks, Dottie, to reinforce the work that Connor does. And year after year, we provide his performance reviews and it is beyond, you know, exceeds expectations and the number of hours that Connor puts in, he's a leader. And it's, to me, I think, also shows when you rank him, if you could stratify him with his peers throughout, you know, the entire state of Massachusetts, and he's continually recognized at the state level as well for being a municipal leader that goes above and beyond. So it's why I oppose it and it's why he's going to work harder over these next few years because of the challenges that are in front of us and another reason I oppose it. I also understand where Connor's coming from and it is reflective of him as a leader and asking us to do this, which is not an easy decision on anyone's part here at the table.
I'll also say that under any other circumstances, this conversation could be in the other direction where we should be recognizing and rewarding you because you are, as Jamie said and Dottie said, truly fantastic. We are extremely lucky in this community, have strong leadership and, you know, this is one of the most difficult, uncomfortable conversations that have come during my tenure on the board because it just feels so counter to the way we should be thinking about this kind of problem. But at the same time, we're under extraordinary circumstances. So again, I'll just close by saying that, you know, this couldn't be further from any kind of connection to performance because we're so lucky to have you. And, you know, that's all I have to say.
Craig?
I just want to reiterate a couple of things. One is that the board neither sought nor endorsed this decision, although I did, out of respect for you, Connor did support your request. I think that the job that you do, the leadership that you show is exemplary and as Jamie and Jen said, that you are an example of the best public service and that especially when times are tough, you rise to the top of that. That's the cream that rises to the top. And I was one of three votes in 2017 to hire you as the town administrator. And I've said this every year for the last nine years, that I have never, ever regretted that decision. I think that this is, this decision that you've made and that you've requested us to approve, I know it was a difficult one, but I very much appreciate, having been an administrator myself, appreciate the fact that you are looking out for the people that work for you and that the role modeling that you're doing is extraordinary. And I want the people in this town to know the value that we hold for, the value that you bring to this community is extraordinary. And so I'm going to vote for this. You asked for it, but in no way does it reflect on what I think of you as an administrator and as a person.
Craig, did you want to make a comment or no? All right, Craig, would you like to make a motion?
So I move to approve the agreement, the amended agreement.
Number eight.
Agreement amendment number eight, contract voluntary reopen due to budget constraints at the request of the town administrator.
So that's Bodger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. All right, thank you. Next, we have a project update from Granite City Partners.
Sure. So as the board will recall, Easton this year secured an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Brockton for regional sewer treatment capacity of the industrial park. This is a policy goal that the town has through various administrations and boards and community adopted plans been pursuing for decades. So it's definitely a bright spot in a challenging year. We need to get to work. And so Joe Shea from Granite City Partners is here. He is an engineer that we work with on strategic planning for infrastructure to provide an update on our thinking and our planning as far as sequence and timing as we get ready to build the fourth sewer system here in Easton gearing up for town meeting in the fall. So Joe?
Thank you for having me. As Connor had indicated, I'm Joseph Shea with Granite City Partners. My business partner, Olivia Von Den Banken, is home ill this evening with a child. It's the back-to-school daycare September sickness that is a tale as old as time, but two sons are best and regrets not being here. As Connor had indicated, the next sewer initiative in the town of Easton is gathering momentum. Following on the models from Northeastern Village to Five Corners to Queesit, the industrial park overcame a very large, well, took a very large step forward this past winter with this board signing an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Brockton for future wastewater, Easton Industrial Park wastewater flows to flow into Brockton. For some who've been around for a while, this is the third time this initiative has come up since 2010 when the Easton Sewer Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan and Sewer District was formed. I'm going to give you a very brief update as to where we stand with that process. But that intermunicipal agreement can't be understated how that unlocked a wonderful opportunity for economic development in Easton, really maximizing the potential of your industrial park, really maximizing the revenue models you can get out of your industrial park. We stand on the verge of the next six to eight weeks where hopefully there'll be some solid moves down the chessboard. Later tonight, we'll be talking about some town meeting warrant articles to get ready for the design of the industrial park sewers. For those at home who I'm sure know where the industrial park is, Easton's industrial park, from a technical standpoint, is a 200-acre industrial park with 65 developed properties. You can get lost in the maze back there as you enter your way in and wind around. By economic development standards, Easton's industrial park really has a lot of room to grow, a lot more production, revenue production could be done, but it is limited by onsite septic systems that many people know from their yards. So you're limited with what you can build, you're limited with what industries you can have, you are limited by your space constraints. What could be production buildings, let's say you wanted to honor and recognize National Manufacturers' Day, manufacturers would appreciate larger buildings that could produce more of their product on the same site. In Easton, portions of that site is consumed by large septic systems. This project will unlock the redevelopment of the industrial park, the opportunity to expand the industrial park, and the key was the IMA. And now we stand on the next step of a couple more downstream keys to unlock success. Those will include selecting a designer. So Easton put out a request to select sewer designers. They were collected last week. You have seven firms that would like to compete to be the designer of your sewer system. They all have exemplary qualifications. They've all met your minimum standard based upon the solicitation. And the selection committee will be reviewing, contrasting, comparing those packages over the next two weeks and making a recommendation to this board to award negotiating a contract. Whoever is the most advantageous firm will then be joining us at this table as we move forward into a process of communicating with all of your industrial park constituents, the 65 businesses. Many are well aware, the town has done a wonderful job over the years, whether it was Envision Easton or other initiatives, to communicate with the industrial park constituents, your corporate citizens, about what your hopes were for that industrial park. Stephanie Danielson, prior to her retirement and can, on his way in, have done a good job of keeping momentum with some of your larger industries, some of your flagship constituents in the park. But the engineering designer will be assisting in both the designing and the public outreach component. The design of the initiative is budgeted at about $2 million. The total initiative at a conceptual level is a $24 million initiative, if you order a magnitude costs. The designer will also be able to refine that $24 million concept into an actual estimated cost because many of the design details will be refined. In addition, the designer will also be helping in alignment with my firm on some funding strategies. I've had the pleasure of being at the funding table for all three of Easton's previous sewer initiatives. So we've got a solid playbook that Easton had created for public-private partnerships, economic development, using some additional resources because of an asset management approach to renewing the whole streets. For example, the stormwater drain system or the water main shouldn't be overlooked if you're digging up the streets for the purposes of putting in a sewer. From that playbook, the town has already initiated a great key step and that is partnering with Old Colony Planning Council for the submission of an U.S. EDA grant. The town has already applied, in round numbers, has applied for the $2 million design with the U.S. EDA for an economic development grant through the program. Stephanie did a wonderful job of making that submission before she left, working with Don Sullivan at OCPC, and we do hope to hear back this coming, I'd say it's almost October, we'll say in October, I don't want to say this month, next month. That will be a big pivot for what happens at town meeting. We all hope that we are, you are accepting a grant to cover your design costs. You will probably have a match component to which OCPC has also applied to the federal Funding Infrastructure Office for the matching component. So I realize I'm throwing out a lot of terms, but the bottom line is Easton is once again leaving no stone unturned to try to find federal, state money, to try to find some resources to get the initiative out of the gates and to continue in the most cost-effective approach because a $24 million project is a very large project. A couple other highlights of the project, because I skipped over Olivia's notes, is based upon your intermunicipal agreement. There will be some initial warrant articles this coming November. We'll go over some of those later tonight. The large construction appropriation will not be until spring town meeting of 2027, meaning summer of 2027 through 2028 is when the sewers would be installed. That's in alignment with your IMA. One very positive way to look at that is that gives us plenty of runway to continue to acquire federal and state funds to offset any cost impacts. We've got a nice, long runway on this and that was built into the IMA. Another very wise component financially that was built into the IMA is effectively, Easton doesn't pay Brockton for the sewer until they are flowing. There are some soft costs there, but that was also a great financial advantage to Easton because you don't have to pay to hold the capacity. You're going to pay for it when you use it. That's a wonderful business tactic. In Your Packet was a much more detailed component than what I'm telling you tonight, but it goes through a number of the grants that will be pursued. It goes through the timeline in more detail. And one more item that I do want to make sure that I'm clear on is that this process will also follow Easton's very thorough public outreach, public solicitation process. It started with Northeastern Village in 2010. At that point, I was working with a very savvy citizen business advocate in town and we had over 42 touchpoints with respect to meetings, mailings, postings. That model carried through, through Five Corners, carried through Queesit, and that model will continue, I'm sure, in this project because that has become Easton's very transparent, very thorough approach. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Start with you, Jamie.
Yeah, so Joe, this is very exciting and I know years of making, as you mentioned, and this is, to finally have this happen in any place, this was years and years, right, of us courting Brockton for this. Can you give us just on a very, very successful, what an investment like this means to the town moving forward the next 20, 30, 40 years when you've got this 200-acre, you know, property with 65 businesses today, very limited, as you mentioned, by septic, and we know septic spill all around us because we have a very high water table and there isn't even room to grow and make these septic systems larger to handle larger capacity manufacturing, things like this. And we understand that here we are in a structural deficit and a community that would love to have more receipts, right, and a community that would love to take more of the burden, shift it off of the residential taxpayer and have some more corporate tax pay. So can you just talk a little bit about what this unlocks for us?
I can. And, you know, one of the great benefits of your industrial park is it's basically right off of Route 24 as well, there's a little section in Brockton, but it's on the edge of your community. Industrial parks can be the economic engine for your communities. We, my firm and I have personally worked with a number of communities that have tremendously robust economic development office park system, and then we've worked with some that have little. I can tell you the ones that have very few businesses, very few office parks, very few industrial parks, get into an override cycle because they can't cover the costs of escalating operations of the municipality. And it falls directly all to the residential tax rate, the residential burden over and over again. Easton has 200 acres of untapped potential and a great location that really needs to be unlocked for that more balanced tax distribution, more jobs in the community, more of a, becoming more of a regional leader. Fortunately, over the last 15 years that I've been working in Easton, I've had the pleasure of being involved in a number of businesses looking for locations, right, the Yasu Cold Storage, Top Golf, Sam Adams Brewery. Each and every one of these unfortunately looked right past Easton. Easton was never in the conversation. It wasn't even a starter. Yet they went up and down the Route 24 corridor looking for locations, you know, even, even towns such as Free Town, which I don't know if Easton compares themselves to Free Town, but, you know, put on a solid pitch because they had some sewer connectivity into New Bedford or Fall River when Sam Adams was looking to potentially do a relocation of a brewery. Easton is now in the conversation or will be when this initiative lands, and that's where you want to be.
That's fantastic. Thank you and thanks for really highlighting the location of this and how valuable it is to these businesses that continue to want to get outside the 128, 195 corridor and look for, you know, better places to set up headquarters. So thanks, Joe.
Welcome.
It feels like such a huge opportunity with the community. I have two questions. One is around, like, you know, this is, we advanced frameworks before that haven't gotten to this point. Are there any risks that there are going to be hurdles with this not going through from a standpoint of framework or any other points of consideration?
There is always, there are always town meeting votes that must be passed now that the intermunicipal agreement is in place. We would see that as your next major hurdles. There's some land acquisition requirements for pumping systems and sewers. We generally like to do friendly acquisitions or friendly takings, but if it is a situation where there needs to be an eminent domain taking, it is absolutely for a public benefit and you as the town have that process. Through the land acquisition approach, the goal would be certainly to make it a friendly taking or a friendly purchase. And then the next biggest hurdle, and it's always, I guess I would say it's the first hurdle that's ever present, is a financial structure to make the, if there are future betterments, or make the user costs, so to speak, for the industrial park users palatable, right? It's a business cost. When we sewer residential neighborhoods, we are sewer-ing them in lieu of a septic system. Betterments in Easton can be paid off over the course of 20 or 30 years. People live in their houses for a long, long, long... People live in their houses for long, long, long times. Businesses think differently, and we're going to have to make sure that our business model aligns with the way businesses think differently. But for the people who own those buildings, assuming that it's an owner-operated business, the value of those parcels is going to escalate significantly with sewers.
Thank you.
And business people will understand that very quickly.
My other question was around zoning. It's probably more of a Connor question, but is there some time, will there be a zoning review at some point in time based on this timeline?
Absolutely. Yes, those conversations have already started. I know the planning board is looking to what's next as far as Easton's next zoning efforts coming for the spring town meeting. And so one of the things that we have done is to always try to couple the improved infrastructure with zoning reforms so that people can take more advantage of that infrastructure. So that'll absolutely be part of a conversation because even in the time we've all been doing this, we have the benefit of a decently long tenure of a lot of folks who are in this room. Dave, Joe, and I have not, this is not our first go around the block. That said, the world has changed a tremendous amount in the past 10 years, past 15 years. So needing to make sure that we're being thoughtful about what are the types of uses that are attracting tenants, that are attracting jobs, that are attracting significant investment, because that's really more so, I think, all the other districts had an economic development component for, for sure. But there was a lot of residential mixed in there too, which still has many benefits. But this is, this is overwhelmingly focused, the primary focus is commercial economic development and growing that tax base. So we'll be looking at the zoning with Director Kirkland, with the planning board, and again, to Joe's point, it cuts, you know, delay, or I don't want to say delay, delay is the wrong word. Longer runways can, there's risk, right? Because that could increase the, the cost of construction. However, there's a lot of upside in a project of this scale where that not only gives us time to look at the financial model that we do to build a kind of capital portfolio that works. It gives us time to look at the land use and the zoning to try to deepen those relationships with the existing businesses and landowners to make sure that we're measuring two or three times cutting once.
I thought we could mention a little bit about the betterment, basically the betterment costs for the, for the industry. Do you anticipate that many of these businesses are going to be reluctant to stay here depending on the, the cost of the, of the sewer district? Or are they, they sort of fixed into this, this industrial park and they see the advantage of, of this project going forward despite maybe some, some escalating costs to them to do their business? That, that is a great question. You have a full broad range of uses in your industrial park. You may have some uses that like the open space but don't need sewers. I don't want to identify any specific uses, but I believe you will have some change in some of your businesses in the industrial park where people who are looking for the infrastructure to run their business will come in. Those are generally more robust businesses than, for example, I'll say generically warehouse. Warehousing can happen in lots, lots of places. Doesn't generate a lot of jobs, but it needs open space. Manufacturing does generate a lot of jobs, needs water, needs sewer. So there will be a change in the mix, especially because of the, across your 65 businesses, you have an extraordinarily diverse office park from, I guess I call it, from, from pharmaceutical to indoor junky houses. But that's a, that's a pretty broad range, right? That's just what has evolved in Easton's industrial park. Do you anticipate a campaign to, to identify what we're doing to the greater business community outside of this area to try to get people to actually start looking at Easton? Absolutely. Similar to some other projects in Easton, a wonderful model Easton has employed in the past is, is capturing one or two flagship partners where if you build five corners, an Avalon will come. And they become part of a public-private partnership. Now, I'm not saying housing in the industrial park at all, but I'm using that as an example of the longer runway we have to try to identify some flagship businesses that will, will come here as part of this process and become part of the funding strategy, the public-private partnership components that exist. Because they want to be in this corridor, they want to be 24 adjacent, and they want to be right between the major cities that you almost fit exactly between, and, and you've got location and geography really to sell. By adding this infrastructure, you really enhance that position. Thank you, Joe.
So I just want to say that in 2014, when Barry Bluestone did his economic development self-assessment test in Easton, he had a circle and it talked about all the components to having a thriving community. And it starts with, you know, education, not just Stonewall and the colleges around here, but our lower education leading up to higher education, our school system, having housing that's available for people to be able to afford to live here so that they can live and work nearby. So the, the housing, the education, the jobs that are created by the businesses, and what will welcome a business in. And we were talking about sewer or the lack of sewer at that point as a real hindrance to the success of that chain, that circle that, that makes everything work so well. So this has been going on, the conversations about trying to get sewer into the industrial park for years. And I just want to give a shout out, not that I think that Mayor Sullivan watches our meetings, but just in case, I want to say thank you to Mayor Robert Sullivan because he was the one to be able to wrap this up with us and as well as the city council, and the work that OCPC has done on this. Our friends over there have been great allies to us, not just in this, but in the roadwork that we've done, the traffic light at the end of Elm Street, all the big infrastructure projects. They've been an amazing partner. We've been hearing for years from people that we need to bring in, bring in more business, and this is something that we've all been working towards. So this is really a huge win. I think that these kinds of industrial parks, especially if they're able to modernize a little bit, like we can see some of the ones on 128 that have incorporated, you know, walking trails and, and like just a really modernized looking industrial park. We can, we can go up higher. There's a lot of things that we can do to expand in there. We've lost a lot of big businesses recently in the past couple of years. Big businesses that have left because there's not enough room for them to expand. So I think this is, the timing is great. You know, we do, I, I don't want to jinx anything, but we do look at every single stone, like you said, to make sure that we are applying for every grant possible. We have excellent relationships with our state legislators and our federal legislators that support us in those projects. So I think we're really well poised. You know, the timing is right for this, and I'm very excited about it. Also, very grateful that you are a partner continuously because you've got such a long history of this kind of work, and you've educated this board, and I, I'm really happy to have you involved. So that's just my, my comment. So Connor, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, I just said there's an associated article later this evening, which right now has a funding amount left blank as we have those grants outstanding. We hope to learn more. But I will ask the board later to include that because whether it's a match or the full cost of engineering, we want to get to work. But I just say thank you to Joe and that we're excited to get to work. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Item 13, we have some DPW contract awards. The first one is DPW 2026-06, CDM Smith. And this is for landfill monitoring at 114 Prospect Street. We do have this come up every year. Year or a couple of years? It feels like every year.
Good evening. Dave Field, Director of Public Works, with me is Greg Swan, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Good evening.
Yeah, so the first contract is with CDM Smith for $74,200 to form the O and M of our active gas collection system and flare at our closed landfill. It's paid out of our DPW operating budget, and it's something we have to do yearly to comply with DPW regulations.
I look at this as a housekeeping issue. Anybody have any questions?
Now I move to approve contract award DPW 2026-06, CDM Smith landfill monitoring at 114 Prospect Street in the amount of $74,200.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, next we have contract award DPW 2022-23, amendment number four for time bond on called water main design.
Yes, this contract is for the construction administration and oversight of the recently approved Prospect Street water main replacement project. This project would be about 4,000 liter feet of water main replacement going from the intersection of Foundry and Prospect Street going south, as far as we can take it for the budget that was allowed. Time Bond has been for the past five years providing oversight for all of our construction projects to do an excellent job keeping us on task, on budget, on time.
Great. So this is for a budget amendment of $155,000?
Yes, $155,000 and, yeah, $155,000.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay, so I move to approve contract award DPW 2022-23, amendment number four, time bond on called water main design in the amount of $155,000.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Great.
Sorry, no, I was gonna just, I was being too loud, clearly. Sorry. I was going to tee up item 15 after you introduced it. Sorry.
Okay. The next one is discussion and possible votes for Easton curbside trash and recycling program for fiscal '27 onward.
Sure thing.
Can you introduce that, Connor?
Thank you, Dottie. So as the board is aware, our current contract with waste management expires at the end of the current fiscal year, '26. So that's June of next calendar year. We've requested and reviewed an extension proposal, which as I'm sure folks have seen, especially in the news this summer, there's a lot of attention and stress of the waste management industry, not the company, the industry itself is under with rising costs of doing their business. And so the proposal to continue the service as we have it now in Easton would require substantial fee increases going into fiscal '27. That coupled with the fact that cuts that Public Works, the general operating staff have borne since the override failed, there's fewer staff there. So the indirect operating impact of managing this program, customer service, barrels are taking up a greater proportion of the remaining staff capacity. So we wanted to flag early, while, you know, we're talking about runways and having time, a couple of paths for the board to consider, including keeping the program or negotiating the program with a substantial fee increase or terminating it entirely. And so Director Field, Deputy Director Swanner, here, there's a memo in your packet laying out some of the cost pressures we're looking at, and just talk about what, what these different options look like and answer questions the board has. I don't, we're not asking for any kind of binding votes tonight, but I, we, I think all of us would like to get some general feedback and the sentiment of the board as far as planning what our next steps are in the coming months.
Thank you. Thank you, Connor, for taking that up. So tonight, we're going to talk about those two paths forward. And basically, as Connor said, rising operational costs, staffing shortages, increased strain on DPW are the reasons why we're here. The current municipal trash program serves about 4,800 households out of approximately 6,600 eligible households. Requires significant staff time. We have one office assistant that spends about 90% of their time on trash-related issues. The highway division spends 24 to 36 staff hours a week managing barrel deliveries and repairs. And billing collections also place a heavy burden on administrative staff at the senior level of DPW. Due to budget cuts in FY '26, we lost two full-time positions, and we have two more unfilled, making the strain even more unsustainable. So option one would be a significant rate increase to preserve the trash program. We're estimating 38% increase in user fees from $100 a quarter to $138 per quarter. We would have to hire a part-time administrative employee along with that and allocate more DPW staff salary to the trash program. The benefits are we would keep our current service as is for our enrolled residents. The downside is a significant cost increase for residents. It'd be the biggest cost increase the program's ever seen. And we continue to rely on already stretched DPW collection staff. The second option would be to end the municipal program at the end of our existing contract with Waste Management Now, June 30th, 2026, and shift to private curbside collection. Residents would contract directly with private haulers. The town would assist with outreach and provide a list of licensed providers. And we work with our current provider to ensure a smooth transition and automatic rollover for those currently involved, enrolled in our program. This would eliminate the long-term costs and staffing issues at DPW. It would free up DPW resources for other essential and core DPW services. And residents would have some flexibility on choosing their provider and service levels. The downside was it'd be less convenient for some residents that are currently enrolled, and we would lose our role in negotiating lower rates. Continuing with the program now would require the largest fee increase in history. Despite the program being in place for 18 years, we always thought that the more we would add, we would see some economy of scale. That just hasn't happened with rising costs. We just haven't touched that. So we haven't really seen that benefit of a full townwide trash program. Neighboring towns like Norton and Foxborough currently use private hauling models, and the town has nothing to do with the trash program. It's just done privately. And with rising costs and reduced staffing, now is the time to evaluate whether we want to continue and have a massive rate increase or look at possibly ending the program. So we're happy to discuss it with you and get your feedback on which the rest.
So I think the biggest risk, and this is, I think, a lot of people worry this, but the biggest risk moving forward, there's nowhere to put traction in, right? There's a big, big issue with where's it going, how's it being disposed of? We've had a lot of stress put in the system by, by recycling programs alone. Like we no longer can just ship our recycling overseas, which is happening for a long time. In fact, we're at one point being paid for that, and now the cost is prohibitive and we don't send it. So what happens? You, you start to have limited places to get the recycling done, never mind what goes to a landfill. We're out of space here in Massachusetts, so where do we send it? Maybe it goes to New Hampshire, maybe it gets on a train and goes down south. And guess what? Those folks don't want to take it anymore either, so the rates will continue to climb. So our risk, and my fear is that if we leave what economy of scale, I know you said it's 4,800 out of 60...
6,600.
6,600. That's still a sizable negotiating shift that we will lose. And I, my biggest fear would be, once everybody has to go out there and negotiate for themselves, and it becomes even more cost prohibitive than a 38% increase as we start seeing trash get illegally dumped, which happens all the time. People can't afford it, and they've got to find a way to get rid of it, and that hurts us too. So while this cost is, is tough for folks to swallow, and not to mention the additional burden on already understaffed, under manned DPW where, so I get it, there's a, there's a, you know, both a, a cost and a risk. I just think it's greater if we leave, you know, the 40, you know, keeping as many people together as we can and trying to go about this as individual homeowners. It's going to be much more difficult for us.
The rate of $138, do you know if there's a certain threshold that Waste Management is using at us to maintain? And if we drop below that, would that number possibly go higher? So let's say $138 happens and folks can find ways to, you know, reduce, eliminate their trash more somewhere else, even if temporarily. So you, you have a great point, Jamie, about losing bargaining power. Are there any numbers in place as far as like requirements around?
There is in our base contract that if we lose or gain a certain amount of customers that we can renegotiate the fees. But in this proposal, our contract amendment proposal, there's no minimum thresholds. But there is a caveat in the base contract, which was signed, I think, in 2008, that there is, could be adjustments.
So if we were to encourage more folks to consider waste management, going back to that base level in the original contract, like might there be opportunity to reduce there? Like what's, I'm just turning my head around the numbers.
So the base, the base costs in the 2007 to 2008 contract, we've already exceeded those. We haven't, we haven't got any benefit from that. But if we do lose a certain amount of subscribers, Waste Management could then open up our contract and possibly start checking more.
Okay, so it's another risk that we have with this number.
Again, it's not, it's not something that is a major concern for us at this point, but it is.
Right, because convenience is the other factor. Do we have any ideas of what folks in town are paying for their, I know I have neighbors who use other services. I know who they pay though, but do we have any ideas?
That's a great question. So we don't get any real answers from people because... So we don't get any real answers from people because it changes, everyone's paying a different rate. And even when people call, subscribe to our system, they then frequently call back, like, nope, cancel it, they, they beat your rate and I'm gonna stay with them, so, stay with the private hauler. So I don't really know what is being charged privately, I just know that it's probably in the ballpark, we still have about eighteen hundred people that are privately paying for the service, that haven't come up to us, and that frequently kind of flip-flop between the two services.
Yeah, of course, there's probably a bunch of changing and numbers. Okay, notice it's a lot to consider and at a time when a lot of folks are strained right now financially, it's a big issue, so, thank you.
Yeah, I noticed from some of my neighbors who have private haulers that, for example, they, they don't get recycling pickup every week, it's every other week. So there's a, there's a disadvantage there. I never stopped to ask them how much they're paying, I might now go ask them what they're paying. Now, if, if this one thirty-eight, is that your figure or is that what you, is that what Waste Management is telling you is probably gonna go to?
So this is Director Finance's calculation to cover the cost, our cost internally, billing costs and Waste Management's costs.
Yeah, so when, when we get a proposal, it's usually, you know, unit costs or that we then do a financial analysis of based on our subscribership, the transit, those are going, what our current collections are, because we run it as an enterprise fund. So we, our role in the program, although it's the Town of Easton program, it's, we basically act as the price negotiator, the contract holder, we do the customer service and the barrels, but it's still, it's Waste Management doing, you know, bearing those costs of transport, disposal, et cetera. So they give us what those costs are, they propose what those are, and we have to calculate that within our budget. We actually, and it's in Director Field's memo, we, we've been very successful at price control for a very long time. You know, keeping the program, having only grown, you know, I think forty dollars in fifteen years is, is quite good. We're talking about that now as one year's adjustment. But they don't, Waste Management doesn't get into saying, this is what your quarterly fee is. It's on us to set an enterprise rate on the select board to adopt an enterprise rate that will adequately collect what is needed for that fund. You referenced bi-weekly recycling, and Jamie brought up a great point, we used to get, you used to get paid for recycling. So we, in the past, were able to negotiate either fee stability with no programmatic changes, or there were times where we actually improved service for the public without raising fees like recycling. So I mean, I think one of the options that we can think about as well is, you know, going back and looking at, are there things in a program we could spin off or curtail to curb some of that price increase, although that's obviously not attractive either. But does that answer your question of the costs and how, and again, it's a preliminary financial analysis, we haven't gone, you know, there's, there's always a process where we go back and forth with Waste Management, try to negotiate pieces out, try to control costs where we can, but we've never had that preliminary analysis come back with such a large increase, that's why we're here early now to flag it for the board. And as I mentioned, and Director Field mentioned, that, that just the strain it places on a shrinking pool of staff to manage it is, is a real challenge as well, as the town is actively inconsistent with the votes in this community, pivoting away from basically everything that's not regulatorily required that we do. And, and this is not a service we have to do. I don't say that lightly because Jamie's point is accurate, there's, that, that is the real benefit we offer as the collective, I don't wanna say collective bargaining, but, you know, negotiating on behalf of a large number of subscribers, but I don't think anyone on the receiving end of a fee increase like this is going to say, oh gee, they're doing a good job negotiating on our behalf, right? So I think we need to just think about what our, our choices are and hear from the board on that.
Does it affect the staffing or is that not?
There's a, a small, a small portion of that cost would allow us to add staff to help manage the program because right now.
It adds a?
A half-time.
A half-time.
So a, one, so twenty-hour a week. But that's, you know, you're looking at a, a small five-digit number, this is a multiple million dollar enterprise account, so I, well, we can refine that for the next meeting, but I would imagine it's a, a single-digit amount of dollars.
But that doesn't impact the amount of time that, with how we work to do this.
No, it's, it's still, we have a lot of, again, it's almost a full week's worth of time.
Yeah.
Every week to distribute barrels, pick up barrels, repair barrels. It's become much more of an issue than it was when we first took it over.
And your thought was that if we could get more people involved, economies of scale?
That, that was the original thought. So it wa, it wasn't mine, I'm taking credit for this, David Colton's idea was, if we can grow the system, we can then get a better rate because Waste Management's not gonna drive by, you know, three or four houses before they get the next one. And we've added, so the program started around twenty-five hundred people, twenty-seven hundred, and now we're up to forty-eight hundred. But over eighteen years, it hasn't really become a townwide, a townwide program. And we thought when it started in two thousand and eight or seven, that if we can just grow this and be able to get some economy of scale and really be able to have a robust program that keeps costs down, it just unfortunately, it's been a slow growth and inflation and the cost of doing business have gone up substantially, so we really haven't seen that benefit.
Okay, thank you. I, I also share concerns about illegal dumping. That, that, that worries me too, about people who can't afford it and they just find out other ways to get rid of the stuff. That, that is a concern, definitely a concern. Thank you.
So I remember when this program came out, it was very controversial and there was a lot of opposition, how dare the town tell us that we have to use this or prove that we have another vendor? And it turned out, like a lot of these negotiated consolidated agreements, to really work in the town's favor, our barrels were nicer, bigger, we were the first to negotiate to have the recycling twice a week, very reliable, the people that work at Waste Management have, the, the drivers have formed relationships with people in the community, they, especially the little kids love them, we see that on social media a lot with some of the, some of the people that work there. I, I think that they've done right by us and we've been a really good customer for all this time. Is there a scenario where they might take, absorb everything and just look at us as a bulk cus, you know, a big customer base for them, but we don't have to do anything or?
I don't think so.
I mean, I'm sure you've thought of that, but?
I, I don't, I don't think so. But, you know, obviously, it's, we can definitely go back to Waste Management and come up with, you know, savings, ways to save money, whether it's reducing service levels, reducing bulk waste, but those are probably not gonna move the needle far from the one thirty-eight. We, we, we've done this in the past when we had to go up, I think the first time we went to eighty dollars a quarter or to ninety, it was a big jump. And we tried to negotiate improved service, try to help smooth that over, that, you know, that increase of ten dollars a quarter was big, and we're trying to, let's add, so we added the recycling weekly, because at that point, it wasn't much more because they already had the truck running.
Right.
It's easier to run it every week instead of every other week. So we've, we have gone back and negotiated, but it's never been to the scale that we're looking at now. So there's definitely things we can employ that would probably take this number down and change our service slightly, but I doubt we'll be talking, you know, out of the one-thirds. So it's still a significant increase no matter what we do.
I feel like right now, it's a luxury to have staff to be able to work on this, but there's a lot of downside to having everybody have their own vendor for, for the public, won't have the negotiating value, will lose a lot of opportunity with hazardous waste, stay bulky pickup, things that people really count on in the community. So it's, I think we're just gonna have to look at the numbers and make a best, you know, love the, the community to weigh in, not on social media, send us information, like what people really think. That's where the, the whole board will be able to see this. And the only other question I have is, will we look at going up a bid at that time with other vendors or?
That's a, it's a really good question. So D P recommends at least a twelve, a twelve-month cycle to try to get a bid out, an R F P for trash. I've been involved in another community with a change in trash, is a major change. And it doesn't come lightly, and I, I think trying to do it under a year is almost impossible. And we don't have the resources or staffing level to deal with that type of change. I was, to be really honest with you.
Yeah.
That's something that's not in the cards for us right now. There are times that you can do this, you can be a whole section on writing crafting R F Ps for trash, it's one of those things that's not required to be bid, but if you do do it, there's a procedure to do it, you need a lot of bloodline to get that done.
And Dave, to be clear, for folks at home who might be following this, the reason for that is not that the town necessarily is disinterested in, in pursuing change, it's that, you know, when we talk about a fee increase, that's obviously not desirable, but it's the same program. If you talk about ending the program and having those folks absorbed as private customers, there's risk for folks in the long-term price control, but it's still the program. If we were to, and this doesn't mean we, we don't, I mean, we could negotiate an extension and, and look at this, but let's say you change vendors and you're, you're going and retrieving barrels from those five thousand properties, I mean, that's a wholesale change. Again, we'll, you know, refine the numbers, the board feels strongly, we could have a conversation about that, but I appreciate the director's candor, we do not have staff resources to pull that off in nine months. And, you know, if someone says, oh, you should have thought of that sooner, this is not the typical increase we see, you know, if we, but this is also not a great time to try to get cheap trash service anywhere. It, it is the costs we're facing and that, that industry is facing are exploding and...
It's not gonna get better.
No.
The Mass Municipal Association has webinars and conferences on this stuff all the time as well, you know, you, you obviously have that in your, your industry. It is, it's getting harder to find places.
It's gonna be more focused on reducing, right, trying to, that's why there's so many manufacturing companies becoming zero landfill companies, finding ways to offset everything. We, today, we can't post on our business, we do all of our own recycling back into our own product to try to achieve zero landfill because there's no, the cost is absorbing the, it's going up in these next ten, fifteen, one years, it's gonna be dramatic because just the cost to transport it to Alabama or to a different state down south is very expensive and those costs are gonna continue to go up.
And those towns, those states may be able, may say, no, no more.
They'll say, no, they're charging you so much, it's, right, it's gonna, if you're gonna bring it here, then you're gonna, you know, and then those are made cats.
Right. And not, this is obviously not super helpful from where you're sitting, but this is the producer price index of solid waste collection. From when we started this program, according to the Fed, where they would have been two thousand and four dollars called when we started, a hundred and six, that, that line is the pandemic, right, just like everything else exploding. And now it's two oh three, so nearly doubled.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that's what we're, we're up against.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this to us now, we saw that we do have a little bit, not a lot of time, but a little bit of time to think about it.
I just wanted to do one clarification, Hazard's Waste Day is still gonna be here, that's funded by the D P W.
Oh, okay.
It's to make sure that things don't get dumped illegally in our stolen drains and affect our water supply and things like that, so that is funded entirely by D P W.
Oh, okay.
Water Division, so no change to that no matter what we do.
Okay, great.
When do you really need an answer or only a good decision? Because like, end of twenty twenty-six, I'm seeing here, like, when, what is our timeline, sure?
Well, so it's, it's, I think we have a little time, but not a lot.
I mean, we, we have a couple of months.
We can negotiate a contract with Waste Management, no problem. I, I have had conversations with them about what this does look like.
Yep.
And they, you know, basically said that they checked on it, that they would just absorb everyone as a private customer. They have several neighborhoods that are private collection customers now, and they would just put them on that model, take everyone, just add it to that model, and they would start billing the people at their private customer rate, and just, you know, our system would just dissolve. So there is a, a runway that people would have service and be automatically rolled over unless they opted out of that. So again, there is time to do some checking, but not enough time.
Okay.
And Waste Management is not sharing with you the, how much they're charging for the private customers?
I, I didn't inquire on that at this point, I don't know, I'm sure there's some, there's private customers here now in Easton, a couple of our subdivisions. I'm not sure if that's the public or if everyone pays a slightly different rate, kind of, that's what we kind of hear now on the private haulers, and everyone has a kind of a different rate. And even when they go to cancel, they get a different rate to stay on, so it's really hard to track.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't sound like anybody's got strong feelings out of the gate that we, we want more information to be able to look at it, do, am I reading the?
I feel strongly.
There's a, there's a comment there, right, that you, that you want us to gather more information?
Yes.
Before any decisions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you agree with them?
Say that one more time, because maybe I did hear you wrong.
That we want to get more information before we make a final decision. We're not being asked to make a final decision tonight, but if we've all said absolutely not, we're completely opposed to it, that signals them to work in one way. If we say, let's see the numbers, we could go either way, that signals them to pursue it, so, you know, in a different way.
Sure. Yeah, so I would, I'd agree, I think more information now is good because we're gonna get asked.
Yeah.
So the more knowledge we have, because I, I think I'm strongly in favor of not losing the bargaining, you know, chip we have today. And so with more information we can share with people, because here's what happens, there's also a really attractive onboarding price, right? So we're gonna switch everyone over, no problem, flip the switch and you'll become private, you know, Waste Management contractor than privately, and that's great, and any other hauler for that matter. But the problem is, a year from now, five years from now, like, it's, all these costs are going up, you're not gonna be getting these great rates when it's up to you, Mr. Homeowner, to negotiate. We have a much better chance with an organization like the town doing that work. So that's, and that's just business, that's absolutely the way it is, they'll make it, it's like when you sign up for cable TV and you're paying sixty dollars a month and then they say it's introductory, and after a year, it's gonna go up to a hundred and forty, that's absolutely what we're gonna deal with here. So I agree more information.
Ted?
I also agree more information.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right. Special Town Meeting Draft Warrant Review, November tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. The first draft of Town Meeting Warrant is available for the board, it's available in the town offices as well and on the town's website at easton dot M A dot U S slash Town Meeting. We have nineteen articles, it's a little bit larger than our typical fall town meeting because we deferred much for the spring town meeting focusing on the budgets. And I'll start walking through and, I guess, editorializing these. So the first one is typical for the fall, transfer to stabilization fund. This would move twenty-five percent of our available free cash to stabilization fund in accordance with our adopted financial management policies. As we presented at a May town meeting, the failure of the override necessitated significant use of the stabilization fund, which we cannot continue in perpetuity, so it's important we build these reserves back after significant use in that non-override budget as we anticipate additional waves of significant cuts next year unless there's an override. So free cash, we don't have an exact number yet, I think you're looking in the ballpark of between one and a half to two million, that is a number that is shrinking as our margins get narrower and narrower, as we cut deeper into our budgets. And we are put in a position of, of pushing our revenue estimates a bit. So we don't have the exact number there yet, but the board typically, understanding that twenty-five percent goal, I think, I feel comfortable asking you to include and recommend now unless anyone has any strong opposition to that.
Okay. You want to make a motion to a new recommendation?
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Great, thank you. Article two is, I'm just asking for inclusion at this time, no recommendation, this is a placeholder, payment of bills from a prior fiscal year, there are none yet, we usually keep this here until the night of town meeting in the event anything arises, nine times out of ten, we dismiss it on the floor.
Include it or not?
Include with no position taken, please.
Second.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you. Article five is the acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-four B, concerning a prudent investment of trust funds. And the Collector Treasurer, Linda Hawks, is here to explain or answer any questions the board has. This is a local adoption, a local state statute that if adopted would allow the treasurer to invest funds in some different assets to try to generate, you know, a better rate of return. There's more detail in the explanation, I'll land this here if anyone has any questions.
Do you want to just give us a, like a? Do you want to just give us a, like a brief overview for people at home to what this means in layman's terms? I'm not sure I can translate it.
Be happy to. So right now, the treasurer, when it comes to investing for trust funds, the treasurer is limited to a narrow list of about 20 companies. They're large, old, stable companies, Coca-Cola, General Electric, companies like that. And we're not allowed to invest in stocks outside of that list. The return is generally good and dependable, but the Prudent Investor Act, which came into being a couple of years ago, would allow the treasurer or our financial advisors to invest in other companies. Still making smart decisions, still making safe decisions. But as a, just as an example, trust funds are subject to the, to the legal list. That list of 20 companies or so is called the legal list. Our, our OPEB money is not subject to the same restrictions. And our OPEB, our OPEB money last year earned about 6%. Our regular stabilization funds only earned about 4%. Still stable, good, reliable. My job as a treasurer is to keep the money safe, not necessarily go for broke, you know? So you might not save returns that are huge, but still good. But allowing a treasurer to invest in something other than the legal list would give you another couple percentages, even while keeping the money very safe and secure.
Okay, so trust funds, the example that you just gave, what are other examples of trust funds that we would have?
Our stabilization funds, all of our stabilization funds, our CPA funds. We have a couple of small scholarships, stuff like that.
Okay.
That is subject to the legal list.
Great. Any questions, Jamie?
No, I, I don't think so. And I think it, it does make sense to open it up when you listen to a couple of these secure and old companies. One of them, in my mind, they had a great run, but then it didn't.
Yeah.
So I, I like the idea of a little bit more flexibility from the legal list.
Would you, are you the person that selects the funds and rebalances? How does that work?
Most of our money is handled by a financing and investment firm.
Okay, so the firm is?
And they, and we work together, but no, it is not me.
And how often does it rebalance? Like, how often do the funds change? Would that be more of an issue with?
They are balancing them every month. They're investing in, in all sorts of different things, whatever they can invest in. And they're balanced every month.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. You always bring us great options and good information, so thank you.
This is a good tool.
Thank you. Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. And that was to include and recommend Elizabeth. Article six, the septic loan program?
I'm sorry, that's not on your agenda tonight. Article seven is the next one, approving funding for the Easton Firefighters Local 2790 Union Contract. So I'm asking for the board to vote to include this at this time, but no position because we are still negotiating that contract. This is put here in hopes that we will settle and resolve that contract before the town meeting and have an article to fund. So for now, this just reserves its place. I would ask the board to take a motion to recommend, sorry, to include. Article seven.
I'm seeing any questions or comments, I move to include Article seven.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. The next one on your agenda tonight is Article eight, fund sick leave buyback as required by collective bargaining agreements. So this is an article that's becoming more and more rare. It is a holdover of more legacy collective bargaining agreements and benefits that are not offered to most or actually any incoming municipal public employees. This is for a small number of fire department employees who, whose years of service started many, many, many years ago were grandfathered into previous contractual sick leave buyback provisions. This article would fund those obligations for recent retirements and separations from service. It's estimated that fewer than 15% of the existing personnel will remain eligible for this benefit. So it's a decreasing liability to the town.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
Move to include and recommend Article eight.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you. Article 11, lots of public works talked tonight. So Article 11 is a article for funding Public Works Stormwater Utility Feasibility Study. So this would be an article that would appropriate a small budget for the newly seated Stormwater Utility Steering Committee to do feasibility analysis, financial modeling, policy analysis, so that we have some support with that and public outreach between now and the May Town Meeting in the spring, where we would hope to have a fully vetted and well put together utility program rate structure instead of bylaws and regulations. So we added a little bit more in the explanation in here than we typically see because we want to make clear to folks this is funding to help this citizen committee make sure they're looking out for the public. This is not approving the creation of the utility itself. Frankly, in, in previous budget years, we normally would either have consulting funds or would lean on Stonehill Grants for this, but given how much we have cut expense budgets over years and frankly wanting it to be on folks' radar now, we thought having a funding article was prudent. So I would ask for a vote to include and recommend.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Article 12?
Article 12, we talked about a little bit earlier. This would, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or appropriate by transfer from available funds sum of money for the industrial park sewer design services. That could be, you know, in the area of 2, 2 to 2.2 million is the current estimate. We have numerous grant asks that are outstanding. We're hopeful we'll receive them, but when that is the case with large capital programs like this, we often ask the board to include an article so that there's a backstop, that we would either use bonding or other financial capacity to get these projects moving. And so especially if it ends up, we, we have to work more with Director Nightingale on what that would look like between now and your next meeting on October 20th. But if we do not receive those grants and you do something like a bond issuance, typically the exposure for your general residents a bit lower with a sewer project because most of those capital costs end up being recouped through betterments. That doesn't mean that there's no cost, of course it is not, there's no free money. But I feel comfortable asking for a vote to include and recommend at this time. I, of course, defer to the board if you want to wait to see where those grants are. But we are hoping that one way or another, we get to work, so.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Article 13?
Article 13 is an amendment to the Sewer District Map. So Joe referred to this earlier. We adopted our first sewer district map in 2010. That actually lays out five different needs areas throughout the town. Some of the nomenclature is somewhat confusing. One of those needs areas is Five Corners. This would be an amendment to that area, to the northern portion of it, on Depot Street, to add in the police, fire, Public Works Headquarters. So when we were going through the feasibility process for the replacement of Police, Fire, Public Works that voters approved in 2021 and 2023, the Public Safety Headquarters and Works Facilities were sighted on the Depot Street parcel on town-owned land in part due to its proximity and access to the Five Corners Sewer. At the time of the project approval, though, the exact boundaries of those 10 acres of municipal land were pending final design and permitting. And so the inclusion of an address for the district has awaited delineation of a parcel, which has now happened, 11 R 13 B, and the assignment of an address, which has now also happened. So it's not 524 Depot, it'll be 570 and 580 Depot Street. So now that that's complete, we need to do, this is, you know, functionally administrative to just put the parcel on the map.
I move to include and recommend Article 17.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you. And then Articles 14, 15, and 16 are CPA funding articles. I see Wayne Byler from the Plane Department here. If there are any questions, as is typical of CPA articles, the explanation is, covers it. But Wayne, you've waited a long time. It's 8:30. If you want to come up and give an overview of these for the board and answer any questions, that'd be great.
As Connor said, there are three CPA articles that the CPC has voted to include and recommend for the Fall Town Warrant. They're all deferred from this past May's annual town meeting. The first one is the Children's Museum Restoration, and they're seeking $234,730 from available funds to do some comprehensive exterior restoration work. This is matched with a grant from the Mass Cultural Council of about $129,000. So they have a match in place and they're hoping to secure this match so that they can start work and demonstrate to the Mass Cultural Council that they are in fact moving ahead. So it's pretty exciting to see some of the work that they've got proposed. And they did meet with the Historical Commission to run some of these plans by as well to make sure that the proposed exterior changes were appropriate for the preservation restriction and for the local historic district.
So I move to include and recommend the $234,730 from CPA for the Children's Museum Restoration, excuse me.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. The next one here is Article 15, and this is $13,000 from community preservation funds to do some evaluation permitting for four town-owned ponds. So our staff support, Jen Stacy was very suc-, I'm sorry, Jen Carlini was very successful in getting a grant from the Taunton River Stewardship Group to do an initial evaluation of new pond and old pond. And then the Conservation Commission is seeking $13,000 to now evaluate Langwater Pond and Shovel Shop Pond and to do the permitting work for new pond and old pond. And this is to address invasive species that are taking over the ponds, limiting their ecological and habitat value, and quite relevantly significantly compromising their recreation value for boating, for fishing, and for other recreational uses. This article came about by a group of local citizens who approached the Conservation Commission asking for assistance and trying to solve and mitigate the invasive species approaching all these ponds.
Can you just delineate where new pond and old pond are?
They are down on Foundry Street, fairly close to Five Corners. And I think New Pond is the big stone dam and Old Pond is the one east of it.
On aquatic, right before.
So it's not what I call Ames Pond, that's, that's the one that we share with Stoughton?
Um, that is, that is.
Long Pond.
Long Pond, okay, that's, that's what it was.
Many ponds.
Okay.
So I move to include and recommend Article 15 in the amount of $13,000.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. And then Article 16 is $326,550 from available community preservation funds for the second phase of major redevelopment for the nearly 200-year-old historic Wheaton Farm Barn, which the town owns down on Bay Road. The town has spent over $190,000 in funds, including a major CPA grant, to do significant stabilization work on this barn. There is a Friends Group and the Conservation Commission is very attentive to this historic resource. And the tenant farmer also has a need for the barn for his business, but it is in a state of poor repair. The interior needs some more work to be usable for this business use. And it suffers from decades of deferred maintenance. So this seeks to do some very comprehensive roof and siding and, you know, other significant repairs to it. The Time Bond, we are working with them on refining the plans and specs. So they're updating their numbers to make sure that the work that will be put out to bid is, you know, within this budget cap that's being set by this budget or the CPA.
And the budget cap again is 326,000?
It would be 326,550 for this phase of work. And the significant needs are the roof, the south addition, the siding, the windows, the doors. And this is a little detailed, but the interior central bay of the barn has cross joists that are too low for contemporary equipment to go in and out of the barn. So there needs to be interior work to the barn to make it more fully usable to the farmer for his equipment.
Have they already completed the structural repair of the 190,000?
Yeah, yeah, and it looks really good, yeah.
Is this the rest, like, or are they going to come back again after this?
It is hopefully the rest. It is the intent for this to be the rest.
Because I guess I'm just going to ask to, to speak a little bit to the benefit to the town. Because if the farmer that works out of that location, then how many acres of land and what is he agriculturally supported?
Yes, so this is, I suppose I could, it's the O'Dwyers with their local business just up the road. And the fields down at Wheaton Farm also support that local business. And it currently lacks a building and infrastructure for that proximate to that farming operation. There, I don't know how many acres he farms down there, several dozen, I think. Yeah, he also contributes to the community garden. He, you know, plows that up for the community gardeners. And keeps the fields actively managed for agriculture, which is a town goal for local food security. And it is a local economic contribution to have this farming business in Easton and using these town-owned fields.
All right, I appreciate that. And I have seen that in years past and you don't see it as much now, the equipment being transported from one, which is, we're talking miles and miles and miles. It's supposed to probably 10 miles to go one way. So to take a tractor or even any large type of harvesting equipment, that distance is significant.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move to include, excuse me, include and recommend Article 16, the amount of $326,550.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last article for consideration on your agenda tonight is Article 19, Street Acceptance, Show or Drive. This is what you had me hearing about a couple hours ago, that you, you have to do both. It always feels strange. You vote to approve it under a public hearing after the Plane Board has done so, but you also have it on your warrant and ultimately goes to town meeting. So given your vote earlier tonight, I would ask for you to vote to include and recommend.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Article 17, Approval of Conservation Restriction from Caitlin Roach and Morgan McCafferty for 38 Randall Street.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Attached to your packet is a memo from Environmental Planner Jen Carlini, who is also here tonight. If the board has any questions, would like an overview. There's a conservation restriction as part of a wetland permit under the local protection bylaws. It's a 4.37 acre parcel with forests and wetlands that I believe the Conservation Commission has already voted to approve, yes. And as is the typical cadence, they've now asked for the board to do the same. So before I make any technical errors, I'm going to stop talking about it. And if the board has questions, I would encourage Environmental Planner Carlini to come on up with us.
Any questions? Jamie?
I'm just kind of, I want to see if anyone else.
Jen, do you want to come up anyway?
Yeah, I think a little bit of a recap, make kind of your words be good.
Yeah. Tell us why this is important.
Why is a conservation restriction?
Yes, for the community town.
For this particular parcel.
So conservation restriction is a restriction on the deed, so it prevents development, but the landowner maintains their property and can still use that. So it adds to our open space. It protects wetland resources, including bordering vegetated wetlands, the floodplain, local wildlife habitat that will be preserved through this. Preservation of forest canopy, carbon sequestration in the soil. Preservation of forest canopy, carbon sequestration in the soil and in the trees. So there's a lot of benefits to that.
Okay.
When you say the homeowner can, will continue to maintain, so it's four-point-three-seven acres. Homeowner still has access to it, but isn't it obviously, what does that mean? You can't mow that area or what is it?
Correct, yeah, it'll be maintained in its current natural state. So it will, most of it is diswound, and they wouldn't be able to clear that area and stay long. But yes, they would be able to maintain the property as it is in its natural state and still be able to access and use their properties.
So does this function as a conservation easement, they'll carry through with the property, it's on sale?
Yes, in perpetuity.
So the, we understand the benefit to the town, what's the benefit to the homeowner?
The homeowner?
Yeah.
They could ask the assessors if there's a reduction in their property taxes, if that's available or not. That would be up to the assessor.
Did they approach us or did we approach them about this?
This was part of a wetland permit application. So to, it was part of an agreement before I came in. It's part of their waiver mitigation.
All right.
I move to approve the conservation restriction offered from Caitlin Roach and Morgan McCafferty for thirty-eight Randall Street.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Budget Subcommittee Update. Jen, are you reading that?
Yeah, and I'll tag in Connor and Jamie at different points in time. So we actually met on September ninth, which, I'm sorry, September eighth, which was the same date of our last election meeting, but we kind of weren't ready to have a conversation at point in time. So we've been thinking hard about how to best use the Budget Subcommittee, going through a very difficult financial situation ahead of the next year and some difficult decisions that'll have to be made. One thing I mentioned previously, and I'll call to your attention right now, is that we have a printout for you of the waiver collecting updates between the boards that are represented in Budget Subcommittee and the members. So basically the idea here with this questions, no one's expected to fill these out every time. It's supposed to be a guiding framework for getting all the representatives of Budget Subcommittee to be thinking as they go into their budget, their, sorry, their representative boards and committees. These are the questions you want them to be thinking about, asking their peers and colleagues in the boards for input on. So for example, tonight, you know, Jamie and I would go back and there'd be several things we talked about tonight that have an impact, that we would wanna make them aware of, from the stormwater efforts to the.
Trash.
Trash is another big one, yes, exactly. So we'll be going back and having those discussions and making sure to show that information bi-directionally. And this update in this direction is a consistent part of that as well. So, you know, I think it probably wouldn't be bad to have this paper as members of this board with us at all times and kind of be thinking about that lens, that's gonna be really important. The other big thing the committee is grappling with right now is the larger strategy about looking ahead. We spent quite a bit of time during the last meeting talking about our options, in particular around potential override. And we, you know, I wanna start off by saying first of all that any option that's being discussed that is anything different than what we had vetted as a community and, you know, the community agreed to not proceed with, anything else is not sustainable, I believe. It's really gonna be attacking things piecemeal and kind of putting Band-Aids over things. But that being said, we're at a point where if we can get a Band-Aid, it might be the only thing we can work with and that's maybe how we have to do it. I'll defer to Connor for talking about the details of kind of some of the options, but largely we went through discussion on the kind of notes here. There are a couple of different structures that came out, menu, pyramid, and a multi-year override. And then of course, a single-purpose override like we had that was not supported by voters this past cycle. So the thing that I think, I think the approach that the Budget Subcommittee seems to be leaning toward, we have not officially voted on that. The guidance coming out of this last meeting was to go talk to your boards and committees and just have a discussion, kind of take the pulse. There's no vote needed, but really revisit the discussion. And then I'm hoping that when we meet again as a committee, sooner than later, we come to a decision on what our recommendation's gonna be, because we have a very tight timeline this year. And we know that time is of the essence and there are a lot of things that happen that if we give ourselves more runway, we can make more informed decisions and approaches more, you know, with a better eye toward the right recommendation. Connor, did you wanna add anything about the types of overrides that we missed?
Sure, thanks Jen. So I shared the memo with the Select Board a couple of weeks back that the Budget Subcommittee was provided. And the memo is also on the website for our residents to see at easton MA.us/fy27budget, where, you know, we're not trying to preordain anything, but to Jen's point, if we're even considering an override question for fiscal twenty-seven, we need to start making decisions and having discussions now. There are those who will look at the twenty-six results and say, well, the answer is no, figure that out. And we, no override is acceptable. And that's, you know, certainly an opinion folks are entitled to. There's others who say, well, you should try the same thing again, which we, through our inaction, did not opt to do, right? Under state law, the town meeting approves an override budget, which our town meeting did. The town can just keep having elections until September fifteenth. And if one is a yes, it sticks. We did not do that because obviously the decision was not close. Voters were very clear that the proposed override twenty-six was not acceptable. So what I did was just pull together from the Department of Revenue, the manual. They have a very helpful manual on the types of overrides, the approaches to overrides, but it's a technical regulatory memo, it's very long. And summarize, down to three pages, what's the timeline look like? And what are the approaches that the town could take? You know, we're not doing PACE, again, Budget Subcommittee predates that process. The whole point of Budget Subcommittee is to align the elected leaders on these financial and policy boards that citizens of this town elect to guide these choices and get all of them in a room together to talk about exactly this type of issue of how are we going to attack these challenges? And so I'm trying to do my job serving them, giving them, here's the types of overrides, so the single-purpose or the omnibus approach, which is what Easton has tried unsuccessfully both last year and in two thousand and sixteen. That's one general purpose override. It's a large dollar amount, it's for general public spending needs. That did not work. That doesn't mean that no omnibus approach works, but we do know that that did not in the spring. There are menu overrides, that's something Easton has done in the past. It's been a long time since that has occurred. But so that's basically multiple independent override questions theoretically smaller than one large omnibus one on a ballot, each funding a different service or item. For example, different departments for maybe school or fire, police, et cetera. We did hear through the PACE process, we've heard from voters and residents after the failure of the override, that some people believe a menu may be a more successful approach, because obviously that gives a very, very specific amount of choice to every individual voter. There's a tiered override where you have the same question but offering different funding levels, right? So do you, general funding at two million, three million, four million, whatever the highest number that passes with a majority gets adopted. And then there's multi-year overrides, which splits it out over years. That's very uncommon, but nonetheless, I summarized it for the board. Another item that we have started talking about that I think the Select Board, you know, very much needs to be actively thinking about is just the sequence. So what Easton has historically done, although you do not have to, for an override to pass, you need to have a town meeting adopt an override budget and you need to have a ballot pass. You don't have to do town meeting and then the ballot. You can do the ballot first and town meeting after. There's pros and cons to both approaches. The pro of doing the ballot first is that then you don't have multiple operating budgets being presented at a town meeting. The budget presented at that town meeting reflects whatever voters picked. So there's some streamlining there. You lose the opportunity of that large public forum, although you can have others. None are ever as big. You know, we had almost thirteen hundred people at the town meeting in May. That's, you're not gonna get that at a typical board meeting. But that's something that I think the board should be, should think about. You know, some communities this spring, many communities in this area in particular, this area of the state that sought overrides going twenty-six, and there's many of them, because the challenges we face are not, you know, some manifestation of something Easton is doing when everyone else has it going smooth. We're facing structural issues that are crushing schools in towns around the state within exploding healthcare costs, utility costs. Many of the people who pursued overrides in our area failed. There are some who put the ballot question first and then the town meeting, and others who do town meeting and after. If we're going to consider the ballot question first, there's upsides. One of the things that was impactful, obviously, in the PACE process and the budget process is the notice of reduction in force for employees in a later, like getting to June tenth, until people know what the budget is July first, the more uncertainty there is, the more risk that presents to the workforce. Whereas having a ballot in April with the town election is much sooner. There's drawbacks that pushes the budget up. And I think Jen, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's generally where the discussion is leaning, but there's certainly no, no one's picked anything. But we're here tonight to put this on the board's radar. I'll be joining the school committee at their meeting next week to talk about the same. I know finance committee is going to be discussing it, because we wanna just start feeling out, are there any strong feelings in any way? Menu, not a menu, no question at all, no override. Do it on the ballot first and town meeting or town meeting and then the ballot? Because I think, as I'm showing by just giving you a thousand options and no direction, I am certainly probably the last person in Easton to say that I know how to make the override work. I very obviously don't, given how this has all gone. So I think, you know, really I'm trying to lay out, these are just choices. And we expect, obviously, as these discussions are ongoing, as the impacts of the cuts in twenty-six start to reverberate through the community, now that school has begun, now that people are hearing the kinds of discussions and decisions that we're having to make, making it real, we're going to hopefully start hearing from people on, do they have a perspective on this? And we're gonna have to start making decisions pretty quick. You know, we're gonna start pulling the budget together. We have some really important stuff that's outstanding until well into the winter, things like the GIC rates, things like the state budget, but we'll know most of that by January. We don't know the exact amount, we know we're in the red, you know? There's no guess here. We were very clear going into this year that if the proposed override failed, that this is what next year also looks like, that this wasn't a one-and-done. Because we need to, a big thing driving the discussion with the Subcommittee is a general appreciation that you can't just keep, we can't keep relying on the stabilization fund. We did so to give time for the consideration of the PACE process, so the community was not ambiguous that it picked cuts, and we're doing that now. And so now the question becomes, do we do menu to preserve certain things like public safety, right?
We're also getting complaints about things that happened as a result of the cuts.
Correct.
The school committee, their first meeting out of the gate, had people there complaining about fee increases.
Correct.
We've had emails to us complaining about things that our services impacted. So I think people, you know, need to give us feedback. If the answers still no, they need to know what this means. Like, it's very surprising to me to get the feedback from people that are shocked that there's been changes that have impacted them, when we were trying so hard to let people know not only that there were changes, but what the changes were gonna be. And we do, this board has a lot of respect for the voters, and that's why we put together the PACE Committee so that we could do the education and everything. But, you know, voters are really gonna have to look deeply at this and think about what another year like this moves forward as, you know?
Yeah, so thank you, Dottie. This is what Jen, that each of us will compile and bring back. And you brought up some good ones and another one from the schools and complaints we're hearing. There's retention issues and with that, we're losing programs. And people that are going to other municipalities because there's less obstacles for what they're, you know, doing and they're not having to continue to work extraordinary hours and lose staff, right? So now they're going, their quality of life is improving, because they can be home with their families on the weekends instead of, you know, working or being out at a marching band event and then putting in many, many hours. So I know that music is one I'm hearing a lot about, because it affects a lot of people. And that's, I'm gonna say, huge accolades to Easton and its music program that it's built, because it's recognized nationally for its music program. And I think that enriches our children's, you know, experience through school, not just primary school, but when they get on to secondary education and beyond, this really helps. I think there's a lot of learning function gained from being exposed to music, how to use that part of your brain and learn.
And the arts.
In the arts.
Connected with that, yeah.
Absolutely. So these are things we need to hear about. I think GIC is another one that, you know, when we talk about unanticipated, well, I think we're all anticipating, because we've already talked about our own personal insurance going up. So we're pretty confident the government insurance, you know, programs are gonna go up. And we know what that looks like at a double-digit hit. And to Connor's point, this is, you're in the red already, we're gonna go further as we knew. And knowing which way we lean in terms of what type of override you wanna do, because I am very concerned about a menu. Maybe my concerns will start to wane, maybe it'll become, no, this is gonna motivate more people, because they know if they're not there to vote for this, that, or the other, whether it be schools or you're really concerned that someone's gonna make it to your home in an emergency on time or you're gonna have, you know, roads that aren't falling in and caving in, you're potentially driving into a sinkhole because we've failed to, you know, keep up with infrastructure. Maybe that motivates and we get everybody from everywhere to say, jeez, I better get out there and vote, because otherwise mine's gonna get shot down. I, I don't know, right now I feel like, you know, yes, we tried to do a collective push, it didn't, it didn't work. And we spent a lot of time educating a lot of people on what an omnibus looked like, choice looked like. So that's, that's my concern, is which way do you go? And I don't, I'm so far not confident in a plus side to, to doing a menu option.
Well, the thing with the menu option is whoever gets the money that year for the thing you wanted to go to, it goes back into the pool the next year and split it. So you don't really make a lot of ground that way, I don't think.
The monthly compensation rate is that the most part of the money does get allocated and the process happens most of that time now. So you are able to properly, you know, act on what the intent was, that funding is allocated for the next budget cycle. So, you know, I think from the standpoint of confidence with community, that is that you're built in control. But I, you know, I have the same reservations you may have, of course. This isn't sustainable, none of it is sustainable, it's the often most present that last past year. And, you know, we've heard a lot of fear, folks, and they have to afford it.
Well, I think getting the feedback is important, because this is unprecedented times, right? And also talking about insurance, having federal cuts to Medicare is really gonna cripple our insurance in Massachusetts, which impacts the insurance rate payers to cover for costs of things like that as well. So I think people should weigh in, let us know, send us emails. We hardly got any emails the last time through, through the whole process with the budget, even with PACE and everything. So I hope that people will reach out directly, seriously, let us know where they stand, because it is important. And we're gonna have to try new things, you know?
I've been having similar conversations, like you have with people in communities. Well, I'm hearing, you know, the biggest ones tend to be, you know, the fire department. And the other one is just the situation with teachers and making sure that, like, for example, at the middle school, like, losing entire team, it's a massive impact to that, the classroom size. So you're saying that parents are starting to notice that the classroom sizes are much larger. And maybe that's fine for a lot of kids in the class, but there are kids that, in the class, that make a big impact in their ability to learn, the things that they need. And that's, that's not fair, that certain kids will fall behind, because, you know, the classroom sizes have gone up fifteen, twenty percent, it's just unacceptable for us to be like.
I just ask, Craig, do you have any take back with us? Because our next meeting will happen before this, it's gonna happen.
Yes, our next meeting.
Yeah, I, my, my concern, due respect to the education system and what you said, Jamie, about this music and the arts, et cetera. I'm very concerned about police, fire, DPW. And I think I would put DPW first because I think we've, they've, they've lost two, two positions and they have two that are unfilled. And we just had that long conversation tonight, talking about the fire department, the number of hours people are working now, the, the risk to the community, the, the fact that the, that the police department is down staff as well, but I think below what we were 10 years ago. And I think that there's a huge population in this town that didn't come out to vote. And the question that I rack up my brains about is, why? And what, what do we, what can we do in order to be able to get the information of those people that, to make them, to help them care about getting out to vote? And, and I, I don't know about, about whether it should be a targeted kind of, or, you know, a menu type or target. I mean, I'm not sure about that, but I know that, that you guys are going to put in an enormous amount of time and effort into sort, sort of sorting all those things out. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned. I'll just, a small caveat, given, given what's been going on in, in the greater, the world and in this community regards to, to religious organizations. You saw what happened just out in, in Flint, Michigan yesterday. The Jewish community in, in Easton has been approaching the police department and hiring police officers to do detail work. And all of a sudden we ran into a problem where we couldn't, nobody, nobody was volunteering to, volunteering, nobody was willing to do it. They, they, they put an enormous amount of effort into going to seven other towns. So we had one of our holidays last week where it looked like we weren't, weren't going to have any police detail there, which was a real concern to the community. And the part of that is because people are working all these hours, forced overtime, et cetera. We finally were able to, and thanks to the police department who continued to try to find somebody who would come to cover us, we finally did get an officer to come from another town. But meanwhile, one of the officers that was on duty, driving, doing the patrol, came and stopped in our, and, and spent some time there just helping people feel more, more comfortable and safe that they were, that they were there. But that, that speaks to, I think, the, the concerns I have about the police department in turn, and, you know, and, and as I said, Dave and Greg put a, we laid it out for us in terms of, of what the issues are. And so, I mean, I, I think that we're, we're not, we're not, we're at that, at the, at that cliff that I talked about last year. And people are beginning to realize it, but I'm not sure that the, the greater population in town is, is, is aware of it yet.
Yeah, we talked a lot, you raised a really important point about like outreach and like why people vote. And we spent a lot of time in the committee talking about like, how do you reach people? And, you know, we had, PACE put in so much time, so much information out there. It felt like people were engaged and showing up and, you know, there were people at the school that night, that room was packed, but it wasn't enough. There just weren't enough people that either knew what was happening or, or, you know, took it serious. And if I don't know, or you know, maybe they first, I have to, and it's, it's probably several answers. We, as a committee, we have to figure out how you actually get an information out, engage those with this decision. If you see, you know, what's the issue, are they following what's going on? I do not know if there's a normal alarm, but it's enough. So, and we really love it to the point where we're fixing problems that are going to take. As Dr. Cabral said, 10 years to fix staffing problems once you've gone down this road. It all unravels so fast.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, we're seeing that on the town side as well, right? I mean, with the amount of time it takes to recruit and hire, especially positions like paramedics in the fire department, you know, that there, the fire department is down nine-plus positions at this point between the budget cuts and then all the resignations of people seeking more secure employment. That's a, that's a dire situation that can't just get fixed. I mean, so, so we are now, and I'm not trying to pour water on it and say, oh, it's all for loss. Like, we're going to do the best we can to provide the best services we can. But the, an organization of this size, you know, that was on a positive trajectory for a decade through some pretty unstable times. It takes a long time to build that inertia. It takes a lot of force to turn that ship around, which has now happened. We are heading in the wrong direction. And so the question becomes, do we zero out that budget gap through another round of millions in cuts on top of what was already done? So that we can start growing more sustainably from that new significantly reduced baseline? Or do we do something short about whether it's a menu, you know, a targeted approach? But I, I think it's really important that, just the timeline we're talking, I mean, Ju- July of next year is a very long time from now for our fire department and for a lot of our municipal employees. And so we have our work cut out for us. And I think the impact of this is going to become more and more visible to the public as we go. I think, so I just want to be sober about the fact that, you know, when you use language like, do we want to be fixing this? That's what we would be doing, right? The, the omnibus approach clearly failed. And we talked about this with, with the community that if, and it's not off the table, I haven't heard anyone jump up and say, let's go for an omnibus, but to, to go back to where we were in 2024 would now be more than 7.3 million, right? Because now there's all the cost of that turnover, there's all those other years of accumulated cuts. So it's not for me to say whether that's on or off the table. I don't, I don't know what the board feels it is, but we are, we're in a different position now. And so it would, it would be helpful, you know, of course, folks are free to just say no to any of these, but it would be helpful for feedback from folks on, is there some version of this that is, people are willing to think about and talk about?
All right. We just have a couple of things left. Number 19 is the acceptance of resignation from the Recreation Commission, Michelle Durant, with a term ending of June 30th, 2028. We want to thank Michelle for her time on this committee. The next one, she's also resigned from the Human Rights Committee. So I'll just say for both, we appreciate Michelle's time, that she's dedicated to those commissions over the years. We'll vote on them, we can vote on them, can we vote separately?
You could vote as a slate if you wish. It's, it's a formality. The resignation's effective already, but the board has always, as a formality, accepted them.
Okay, we'll vote on them as a slate. The Human Rights Committee term ending June 30th, 2028 as well. So that will mean that there'll be two other volunteer opportunities that'll be posted on the town website for the Recreation and the Human Rights Committee. So Craig, if you want to.
With regard to the resignation of Michelle Durant from both committees, with a term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, and this is a roll call vote, your name and slate.
With regret again, Stevens Slate.
Also with regret, Stacy Slate.
Fulgenetti Slate.
Bodger Slate.
All right. Acceptance of the minutes of September 8th, 2025.
So am I, Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Town administrator notes.
Sure, thanks, Daddy. A couple of updates. So something that came up a lot with discussion with a bunch of subcommittee and PACE is, you know, what kind of work is Easton doing to change the dynamic on the state level, the structural revenue problems we have. So the board knows I'm on the Fiscal Policy Committee for the statewide municipal association. They are working on a report on the state of municipal finance across the state, and it will be a bleak report because it's not just an Easton problem. This is everywhere. So we're really trying to pool our resources and collectively lobby for reforms, whether that's on unrestricted general government aid or Chapter 70. There's a lot of alignment between superintendents, managers, labor on that, that the challenges that we are all facing are not getting easier, they're not going away, and we are not going to, you know, communities can't just have overrides every two years forever. So we're, I'm putting a lot of effort in there on my state role there, but certainly because of and on behalf of Easton. Since the last meeting, I, I joined the MMA to testify in front of a joint committee on public health, co-chaired by Easton Senator Driscoll, to advocate for adoption of age 2450 and S1504 that's titled an act to protect Massachusetts Public Health from PFAS. That is a bill that would enact the regulations and legal framework consistent with the PFAS Interagency Task Force recommendations to regulate and ban many types of PFAS manufacture and sale and create more funding opportunities for municipalities, removing it from our water. So was, go up to Beacon Hill somewhat regularly to advocate for and try to raise awareness of the impact of PFAS on municipalities. So was pleased to be able to participate in that testimony. And we appreciate Easton's delegation working on that bill. Locally, steel has begun going up at our public safety headquarters. A topping off ceremony will take place next week. That event will be broadcast by ECAT for our residents as the site's still actively under construction and not publicly accessible. Finally, I will be hosting a series of town administrator office hours here at Town Hall and off-site in Easton over the month of October for residents who want to connect on any, you know, town issues. It's really going to be focused towards the fall town meeting and our finances, but of course, they're free to come, say hi and check in on any government, town government issue. The first one will be next week here, Monday, October 6th at 6:00 PM in the Corona Room of the town offices. We'll publish these dates online and share it with residents. So if anyone's watching our meeting at 9:10 and you want more of this, I'll be here at 6:00 a week from now. So come say hi. And we'll, we'll advertise the other locations and dates once we set those in October. Thanks.
Thank you. Sean?
I'll just make a brief mention that since we had a meeting before the Tricentennial Committee's next event, the bonfire is on October 11th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at OA on the Lower Field. There'll be a free barbecue provided by the Lions, Go Lions again. And that's donated by Roach Brothers. So that's free of cost to residents. And then All Town Fresh will be there with free cookies and hot chocolate as well. So thank you to our community partners and Tricentennial Committee for making this possible and to our Police, Fire, DPW, Health and Community Services, and all the other town staff departments that have put in a lot of work to make this possible. And this will be the last big event that is open to the broader public. There is the gala that's a ticketed event in December, but this is the last big open to the public event to cap off a year's worth of really exciting and excellent events.
It feels like yesterday we were just appointing the committee and it was so far away.
I know.
We didn't talk about this before, so I hope I don't really put you too much on the spot.
Sure, let's do it.
So now that I've learned this and that.
Love this. I'm, yeah, my brain's still on Australia time, but let's do it.
So you had a very interesting journey during COVID visiting all the town halls. So I think that's really cool if you just want to give a, give a little
Sure, yeah. I wasn't expecting this for the record. But, yeah, I visited all 351 city and town halls in Massachusetts between 2020 and 2025 with my husband. We, we mapped it all out, color-coded by year, by, by community. And we, so we visited from the Cape and Provincetown all the way up to North Adams in the west. And so little towns like
Even Glasnald, right?
Glasnald, 10 people year-round. So, and they, they all have a planning board and a select board and a board of health just like us. And we, we
They're on every board.
They're on every board. They are the board of boards. And so it was just a really great opportunity to see what is outside of the norm, the norms of the places that we typically go. And seeing towns that have a lot of things to offer. People on the west may not, may have never been to Easton, and I've never been to Leyden, or Gill, or Peru, or Florida, or all the other towns that people don't know exist in the western part of the state. So it was really great to see what else exists outside of the, the 495 belt and/or the Cape. And there is a lot of great community amenities that we just don't know because we might drive past them on the highway but never stop. And so I encourage everyone to just step out and, and explore what else is, is available in this great state. So.
And you ended in your hometown.
I ended, I started in the town that I lived in at the time in Somerville, and I ended in the town that I grew up in, like strategically, like on purpose. But some towns, some towns were harder to get to than others, but those two are pretty easy.
Well, I love that. I think it's very exciting and the pictures that you, that you shared are very nice.
Some are better than others, but, and some, some town halls were cooler than others. But, I mean, you have like old renovated elementary school buildings and you have huge brick, like it looks like it's from the Victorian era, just these monstrosities. And, and it's just really cool to see the differentiation between town to town. But yeah, there's 351 little fiefdoms in, in Massachusetts and, and they each have their own story. So.
Did you schedule a time with like leadership from each community or?
No, no, no. This is like a weekend, like we didn't do it in the winter. Yeah, exactly. Like, I, I know there was a little girl who was eight years old that did this a couple summers ago.
Yeah, I respect you.
Yeah, so she did this. I started before her also for the record. But she did it quicker than me. And so, and she met with like Michelle Wu and, and other municipal leaders in town. So we'll have to compare notes and, and see, see where she's at with that. But, yeah, so there were just a lot of towns that I just never knew of that I just met. And I would, almost, not all of them, but some of them, I'd just Google like, oh, like, how many people did they have on the select board? Like, do they have a town administrator? Like, you learn a lot about like what different parts of the, the state are doing because they all have the same requirements that we have. And so how they set up their government, how they operate is always interesting to me to see what choices they've made over the years.
Well, thank you. I think that's a really cool project.
Yep. Yeah, thank you.
Jamie?
That's great. All I was going to say is I think since our last meeting was the 9/11 memorial, so thank you to Public Safety for hosting. And for those of you that made it, I was out of town. Maybe you were there, but thank you.
Nothing for this round?
Nothing. Craig? I was out of town, but the Huckle District had their summer music, end of summer music festival. And by all accounts, it was very well attended and people really enjoyed it. So thanks to that committee for doing such great work. It was a heavy lift this year. We've had more attendance than ever before. Super exciting, but a lot of work. So thank you to everybody that was involved in that. So with that, we're going to, I'm going to ask people, ask the board to go into an executive session, not to return to open session under purposes 3 and 6 of Massachusetts law chapter 38, section 21A, respectively, to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining with Easton Firefighters Local 2790, collective bargaining unit, and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of land situated at 388 Depot Street. So Craig will take a, a motion a second and then we'll have a roll call vote.
Move to go to executive session?
Second.
Not to return.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Melissa from ECAT for being here tonight. And thank you to ECAT for always broadcasting our events.